I think you're so intimidating because we got a bunch of reports and have it.
Sorry, man.
Yeah.
I almost took your computer out.
Scar plug is under the desk.
Are we all ready? We will help lead the order, 701. So we'll start off with roll call.
Okay, Mayor Manning.
Here.
Brennaman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
And Jones.
Here.
And under the next section additions to the agenda. Add to the agenda. Due to public interest tonight, I think what we will do is most of the folks that are here tonight are here to talk about under new business, new facility pursuit on libraries. So I plan on moving that item up to happen right after we get done with ordinances, reservations, that patient experience. So we can have that discussion in the forefront and then we'll move on and follow the agenda as follows after that. One item for that, for us, this is a discussion point for the council. The council wasn't planning on taking any action on this tonight. It's more or less to be informed of what's happening, what the background is, kind of what kind of meetings have been happening and all of that so that the council can have a chance to hear that. Really, there was no plan on having action until our first meeting. So just wanted to give a little bit of an update there. So with that, we move to the second item, which is additions to the agenda or a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? I have none. Motion carries. We have a motion to approve previous meeting odds.
Motion to approve.
Second. Step one. All in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? None. All right, next item up is to approve bills submitted for payment. I have those in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, discussion.
I have a few questions, Craig. What does a $587 weed eater look like?
It's that, it's one with attachment on it, so it's got two different tabs. So you take it off or you can put a blower on it or you can put a pole saw on it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's more of an adapt, you know, it's got an adaption in it there, so something that.
Was it industrial strength, nice one?
Yeah.
And the second question, $117 for oil change for the city car.
I see that, um, what it is, it's extra oil and an extra filters for it. So, okay. We change it ourselves.
Other questions and discussions?
Just an observation, we spend about $4,000 a month for city streetlights since we talked about streetlights last month. That's just a, just an observation. All right, so I see there are outnumbered polls about how many streetlights do we have? Nobody's coming.
Good question.
We haven't got a list from them, yeah.
Two valleys.
They did go through last week and they put all LEDs downtown, so you notice a different lighting downtown.
Did they add a poll on Vandemark in there?
About a year ago.
At the intersection?
No, that one's always Vandemark lane, that's.
Changed that head when they added that poll.
Yeah.
It does seem there. All right, any further discussion on bills? Not a vote. Monahan.
Yeah.
Jones.
Yes.
Brennaman.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
And Nelson.
Yes.
All right, at 706, we have a 705 hearing for resolution 2018-2, the notice to vacate the right of way. That is, probably you won't read that whole description, but it's a piece right over there by the park, which we've not been utilizing for a long time. It's gone through planning and zoning, but it was never officially vacated.
Yeah, so this is a piece of right of way, so on the south end of the park, and there was a map in your packet for you to see. When they redid Second Street, they made it so it curved at the south end of the park. Well, there was, used to be right of way, they went straight across there. Like I said, they redid back in, I think, 2003, the street, so we weren't using that right of way, filled it in, is now utilized as park area. After they did the street, they should have vacated that right of way, right after the project, it never got vacated, it's showing up still in all the city maps, the city land maps. So basically, this is just kind of a house cleaning item for us to, you know, it's not being used as right of way anymore, it's being used as city land, so we just need to vacate that right of way to represent the correct use of the property.
Make a motion to vacate right of way as designated resolution 2018-2.
I noticed you got a date wrong on the later buckle Jeremy signs. You have 17th day of March, it should say April 1st.
Oh, yeah, we'll correct that before he signs.
Thank you. Any more discussion on that? Okay, not a vote. Nelson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yes.
Actually, at 708, we'll skip down to resolution 2018-3, support for the adoption of Lincoln Minnehaha County Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan 2017 update. This is something we're down.
So this resolution basically states that the city is in support of the Lincoln Minnehaha County Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan. And all last year, and I've updated you a couple times through the process, but every five years, both Lincoln and Minnehaha County kind of have to update their disaster plan. We work together with the counties and the other cities and the municipal, you know, in the county region. And by doing this, we kind of identify, you know, any weaknesses we have or any efforts we've made as far as being able to mitigate, you know, if we would have to have a flood or tornado or whatnot. We've gone through this whole process with CICAR being the facilitator with that. The plan's been updated, it's on their website if you want to look at it, but by going through this process and supporting this document allows us to be able to apply for basically federal aid. Without us being part of this process, if our firmware were hit by a tornado or flood, we wouldn't be able to apply for federal aid. So this resolution here basically just says we went through the process and that we are in support of the plan. And it'll get filed with the plan with.
Make the motion to approve resolution 2018 that is here.
Second.
Discussion? Any none? Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Here.
Now, we took a minute, so we're not quite at 7:10. Not quite 7:10. Now we've got our 7:10 hearing for the first reading of order 252, which is the rezon application per tract one coming out of their subdivision southwest quarter of 15-102-51 of Hartford City.
Okay, and this is an ordinance that would rezone property within town. This has also gone through planning and zoning, they approved it at their meeting last week. This property here is the property on North Vandemark, which is going to be NAPS Landing Development. Currently, you know, it's come before you, they're doing a preliminary plan for residential housing development. Currently, it is zone NRC, which is basically the city's egg zoning code, and they're rezoning it to our residential. That'll allow both single and multifamily to be built upon the property. So this would be first reading of that ordinance to rezone it. Next meeting will be the second reading.
Make the motion to approve first reading.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Any none? Will vote? Brennaman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Manning?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yeah.
And Nelson?
Yes.
All right, got to ordinance the resolution here. We are, like I mentioned earlier, going to jump down to one item in new business, which is the new facility for Suland Libraries. I'll just remind everybody, kind of in the crowd tonight too, it's important that the council from here, everything that's being talked about up here, so if you're, any side discussions, anything like that, definitely echoes up here, it's hard for everybody to hear, so if you have something to say, I'm going to call a few people to kind of give some background on this. And, but if you have anything you need to say, please raise your hand up, I'll give you a couple minutes up at the podium, so. I'd like to start, I think Jesse can probably give a little bit of background on this, what's happened. This has been, this item on the agenda is meant to be a discussion item tonight, to let the council up to speed on what's being talked about, not necessarily an action item.
Good evening, City Councilman Mayor Manning. Hartford at one point was the headquarters for the Minnehaha Library, which was reorganized into Suland in the eighties. The bookmobile served some of the Minnehaha County communities for decades and continues to do so today. Sometime in the eighties or nineties, the Hartford Library moved from the building into West Central School District. A contract was signed in the mid-nineties between West Central School District, Suland, and the city of Hartford for a library at West Central. Part of this agreement stipulated that the city of Hartford annually appropriate funds directly to Suland, appropriation for 2018 would be $3,400. Throughout the 2000s, the library at West Central was open to the public during the day and night. Starting in 2016, West Central made the decision to close the library off to the public during school hours. This decision was made with the safety of school children in mind, and has dramatically affected the public's usage and has driven many former librarygoers into Sioux Falls for their services. Many of these people go to Prairie West and Sioux Falls. Mountain Sioux Falls may name them on errands and shop, which ultimately detracts from businesses in Hartford. The fanfare of the community is also but affected. Community is fostered by shared experiences, interactions between young families, youth, and our senior citizens, and normally half the library has seen a significant difference. The library in Hartford's current hours are Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., Tuesday from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and Friday and Sunday it is closed. The committee of library patrons formed in the last several months, aiming to address a lack of access and to find a solution. After much consideration and research, one idea rose to the top as the most plausible, cost-effective, and beneficial, a library downtown at the Gage House. The Gage House, also known as the Senior Citizen Center, has a room on the first floor on the north side of the building that has been mostly unused. With some construction and remodeling, this room could be turned into a library that would serve the public through services such as book checkout, youth programming, public Wi-Fi, internet access, along with a plethora of other services offered by Suland. On March 13th, the committee pitched the proposal to the Board of Directors for the Senior Citizen Center. After consideration, their board overwhelmingly voted to move forward with the proposal. Next, Suland leadership was invited to meet in Hartford to consider the space. While it serves one of their smallest libraries, they see great potential in Hartford, will be able to find some ways to rework the space. Throughout the later part of March, they visited the space several times and are comfortable moving forward, albeit with improvements. On April 10th, Kristi Marketing with the Committee of Concerned Library Patrons, Jody Fick, Loni Christiansen, and Alicia Boisen, Alicia, right, Boisen? Great. With Suland, Mayor Manning, Teresa and I, and West Central School District, some of the Bradmarians, met to consider the proposal. All parties were in agreement that something needed to be done and that this proposal would be a solution. The library would be centrally located, easily accessible, and would help bring life back to downtown Hartford.
I think some of the discussion tonight, or maybe some of the concern may be, all right, is this a, would the city prefer to have it here as opposed to it at the school district? And I guess that's, that's not our position on this at all, it's really, it can't be at the school district if things don't work between Suland Libraries and the school district. We're looking at this as a possible solution, as a way to keep a library in town, so. Jody, I was going to ask to see if you had something else, some other things you could add from Suland Libraries' perspective. I would just have you pick the podium and give your name for Roger.
Yeah, Jody Fick, Director of Suland Libraries, and I've been with the library since, before it was Suland, when it was Minnehaha County. So when I started, this agreement was already in place and has held us successfully for many years. Suland Libraries would like to be able to provide service to the citizens during the school day, and I think that's one of the weaknesses about staying in our current location. We'd like to be able to expand and give more services similar to what we're doing in other communities such as Brandon Crooks, Humboldt, Colton. Suland is kind of at the will of each of the communities because all of our communities provide the facility. We've had a good relationship with West Central, but I think as the school continues to grow and as security concerns strengthen, I think that we probably have outgrown that space in terms of being a shared library. Another major change that happened over the years is when we first merged, we were just within the high school. Now the library actually serves the middle school students too, so that interaction of appropriate materials in the public library doesn't always fit the space of a school library. We've worked to make sure that what students get during the day is more appropriate, but it, it does bring materials to them that they may not especially want to be exposed to without parental back.
You'd mentioned, you know, it's the hours, you want to be able to really have more hours and, and is that, we talked about this when we met here last, last week, I believe, but just for the sake of everybody here, is that, is that the, is that what helps lead you to this decision that, yes, it's this proposal, which is just a proposal at this point, is a much smaller place? Not, you know, it's just not nearly the space you have now, but one thing that is attractive is the hours, is that?
Yeah, the ability to have hours before four o'clock in the afternoon is a big one because we want to be able to serve those younger, young and the old in addition to the school age. The other thing that's attractive to this space is the ability that we have to have programs, public programming, more storytimes, more book discussions, more author talks. Actually, we bring in all sorts of different activities of all different types of interest. And already in talking with the senior center, you know, we have the meeting room space for the library collection, but there'd be times where we could coordinate and use their meeting space for our programs. So that's very attractive. Other things that we saw as a plus are that you have the large daycare that currently will walk to the library now, we're so much closer to them. And I understand that there's another one that's going to be built, that possibly will be built nearby. This location in the center of town, I think, also is a better one for serving all of the citizens of Hartford, simpler for kids to get there on bike, central location, and I think, you know, the parking situation here, there we have a parking lot, but here, you're not going to be competing with the teenagers who are also coming to school and leaving schools, so I think parking will be unneutral at the very least.
Sure.
So this would be a second location, or there'd just be one library?
There'd just be one library. We'd only be at one spot.
How's that affect the students then?
The students could still use the library here and they would still have their school library. So similar to when you're in Colton, the Tri Valley School has a library and we have the public library, or when you're in Sioux Falls.
Okay, so there'd be a school library and a public library. So there'd be two libraries.
There'd be two libraries. There'd be two libraries. It'd be more like university systems across the nation, where there's a separate public library and a separate school library. And West Central actually has three libraries right now, between the high school and then the two elementary schools, so. It also allows the school to, you know, I should speak for them, but they have to keep their collection pretty well to get our collection in there too, so they could expand what they own.
Questions from Jody? I'm looking for a number here of as far as cost, and I'm not seeing it. Did I miss something?
Jesse can probably give some background on that piece on what the cost would be there.
Yeah, so for some upgrades we have in mind, you can look through your next document. Doesn't have the numbers on this one at all. Initially, we had a contractor from a town here look at what it would cost to provide an estimate between eight to $10,000 to do most of this work. I think Craig in the last week has gone over that as well, and I believe his numbers are similar.
Yeah.
Between eight to $10,000 to make those necessary upgrades. Was that just for priority one or priority one and priority two?
Just priority two.
We talked about that stuff too.
So do you view this whole entire polls over here on your next page, usually eight to $10,000?
Has there been, has there been any other, look at any other billings or just like one?
Joanne, you want to take that question?
Pardon?
The question was, so Joanne Miles is part of the library committee, and she, would you want to speak on behalf of the committee on what other options have been considered?
I'll be coming right up here, Joanne. I will know everybody can. We really couldn't find anything that was feasible or available for a cost that we could afford. And so that's why, and I don't know whose idea it was, maybe Jesse's? I don't know. It just, it just happened when we were meeting, that it was brought up and we started looking at it and found because there is access to the side door, because that property is not, on the north side, it's not an alley, it butts to the city hall, so we could close it off without any. And it just kind of happened, Jeremy? You know, it really did. It really did, it just kind of happened. And then Suland looked at it and the seniors board agreed to the possibility of it being done here.
Okay. Thank you. How long has the committee been meeting?
Pardon?
How long has that committee been meeting?
About six weeks.
About six weeks? Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, so the city's portion would be the initial give or anything? And then would it be, would the city's portion be the monthly rent?
Yeah, so, so the way I see this is that $3,400 that we're giving to Suland now, you know, every year annually, that could be utilized for the rent going to the senior center. I think they think that's a reasonable grant, we've kind of talked about them. So basically, that would kind of be a wash, but we'll have this upfront cost of converting the space to, you know, fix the door, make everything, you know, up to code, ADA compliant, so that's that eight to $10,000 that they're talking about to renovate it. So we'll have that initial cost, but then going forward, like I said, our money that we're appropriating now to the library will go towards rent, and Suland will provide, you know, the staffing, all the materials, computers, you know, all that other stuff in it, yeah.
So the computers are supplied by you, as far as internet access to the building, where we have that?
Suland will supply that as well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll supply that. We take care of that for all of our buildings, so.
And there'd be, I assume, more than one terminal? I mean, how many terminals, as you looked at that space, how many terminals will there be in?
Right, right now, we're anticipating two public computers and then one staff computer plus Wi-Fi. We currently have three public computers, so this would be dropping down, but the more people now are using the Wi-Fi access than are using the actual computers, so I don't think that'll be a problem for people in terms of being able to get on the computers.
And it could be in here, but timeline or wishful timeline, where are we at with that?
Beginning of August is the, is the ideal open date, is what the different parties have talked about. First week of August, they'll shut this open by.
The quick math is $13,000 free now in August, is that correct, Teresa? $13,000 roughly speaking?
Yeah, we already have that $3,400 budgeted, but, you know.
Yeah.
We'd have to.
General funds.
We'd have to come up with this other eight, $10,000 if we want to move forward with renovation fees.
Go ahead, do you have a question, Councilman?
No, I don't. Okay, you're first.
I think that a big part of the questions, especially public questions, are, so there's three parties kind of involved with this, right? The city's looking at, at what would be the solution if things don't, aren't working out between what can be provided at West Central versus what Suland needs and wants. City looks at it as, here's a possible solution. Now, I think a lot of the public questions are around, hey, we love the space we have down at the West Central, who lives there, can that, you know, how is that discussion going? So I'm kind of putting you on the spot, so we've been in there, but would you be willing to talk about that to some degree just for, I know that that's not necessarily the city's part of this business, but I think that public, the public would be interested in that part of it as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. As I understand it, we have actually a fairly good problem here. As I understand it, we have actually a fairly good problem here. We have members of the community wanting us to provide more time during the school day for community access to the library. And leadership is up at that library. So I think in able to provide both for the school and for the community members, a situation where Sulan libraries can provide more flexible hours for the community members will benefit the community as a whole. The current situation across the nation with schools, as you can imagine, is to do everything we can to keep that environment safe. And to have just open access to the school at will is a concern across the nation. And so that prompted the move, as I understand it, a couple of years ago, to say during the school hours, we just have to stay with school groups for that library. An unfortunate thing that, that had to happen. As I said, across the nation, there are some schools doing everything they can to keep those school environments safe. And I wanna applaud the Sulan staff for looking at, I guess, the, the whole picture. And they wanna provide better access for people in the community. Thank also Jesse and, and the city staff for taking a look at this option. The senior citizen center has been very excited, quite honestly, about this opportunity to have that availability right there, because a number of them have said they would like to use the library. But by the time four o'clock rolls around, that's kind of the end of the day for them already, so. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other, sorry, Ellie, can't see you anymore. Oh, there you are. Could you speak on behalf of the senior center?
All right. Well, we've got the, oh, excuse me, we've got the excess over there. We've got extra room. It isn't being used, and we would be excited to have them over there. And as when we had the last, the meeting to vote on, it was very unanimous to open up the facility. It's a nice area there, and with the access like it is, I can see it utilized very well. The seniors as well as, as the whole community. That's my thought. So we're in favor of it.
Okay. Well, anyway, for the council's benefit and public's benefit, even when, when this was discussed, that group's meeting slept for six weeks, talking about different sites. Wanted to bring this, I mean, after, after we met, it was like, okay, let's make sure we have a, more or less a public hearing on it. Talk about it a little bit, get some input, and get any concerns out there so that if there's something that needs to be moved forward on, we're ready for it come May, and our May meeting, and somewhere along there. So I guess I should've asked this while you were up there, should've been in there, but is there, right now, or Jody? Is there, your lease is still in place, or your agreement, I guess, is, I should say, is still in place as it's terminated at this point? Is that correct?
Correct. Correct. So if this doesn't happen, that doesn't mean that Sulan is leaving Hartford. But it will mean that our access will still be after the school day. So those, those same problems, not problems, but limitations will exist.
Okay.
I, I would be curious if there's anybody here in opposition to moving to the senior center?
Hi, Troy Larson. I first wanna thank the folks at the senior center for offering this. I just believe Hartford deserves a sole source library where it's not multi-use. And I would strongly urge that the status quo be maintained. I know the hours aren't the greatest, but it's a wonderful facility. And I would sure hate to lose where it's at for the sake of expanding the hours. But I again wanna thank the senior center for, for offering. I just believe we really need a sole source library. And I would greatly urge the city, the Sulan library, and the school to leave everything as is. Thank you.
Is there, so I've got a question. Just so I'm clear. The primary patrons of the Sulan public library are youth, not of school age, and senior citizens. Is that a fair statement? Or do we hope to expand those two segments by moving it out of the school?
We get used by all ages. And I, I should maybe defer some of this to Alicia because she directly supervises the branch. She's there more than I am. But all ages are currently using it. We have a large children's collection all the way down to the early learners. What we're not able to do in the current facility is the programming for those ages like we do in other facilities. So when we do story times, we currently take them out to the daycares. Which, while they get that story experience, they don't get the experience of being served by the books. And it's just a different atmosphere. But we get used by adults, by business people. What are, what are the groups that you're seeing coming in?
Yeah, really all ages, parents coming in with their kids after school kinda thing. And I guess just to kinda echo what Jody said is, the fact that we, in a new space, we'd be able to offer that expanded experience than just coming to the library and checking out books, we'd be able to offer the story times. We offer STEM programming, the science, technology, engineering, math for our elementary age kids at our other locations that we currently are not able to offer to the kids here. We do book clubs, and we do other adult programming options at our other, at our other libraries.
We also may be able to do some computer classes because we have mobile labs that we can bring out if we have the table space and, and the hour, you know, consent the hours to do that.
Refresh my memory, what are the current hours for a public citizen to utilize the library?
So during the school year, we open up at four, and on Mondays and Wednesdays, we're only open for two hours. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, we stay open till eight, and then we have some hours on Saturday mornings.
And that would be expanded to what hours?
At a minimum of twenty hours a week, but probably more. Alicia started working that out because we have to do it within, within our existing staffing. During the summer, we currently are open five hours, plus Saturdays. So our hope would be to have a minimum of twenty hours, but we're gonna have to kind of, well, talk with some of the citizens, see where we need to be, and then make sure that we can have the staff that will be here. So, minimum of twenty. Probably closer to, well, during the summer, we're open twenty-eight hours, so we're hoping to get up to that level.
Sure, I guess, you know, you laid out those times. What current hours are how many?
Current hours.
During the school year?
Twelve.
Sixteen?
Sixteen, sixteen. We're librarians, not mathematicians.
Facts are firmly.
Sixteen right now is what it's scheduled.
Do you have a question? If you would come up to the podium, if you've got a question to come forward, if you guys stand up?
Linda Hartman, I don't have a question.
Thank you.
I just wanted to talk about the library from my perspective. I have been a library user, so I'm not a senior citizen yet. And, you know, I'm grandparents, so I had my kids raised up. We, I grew up in this community, so I have seen the library moved from downtown to the school. I utilized the bookmobile because I grew up on Park. So have had plenty of experiences seeing who uses the library and how it's used. And a couple of years ago, when the school made the right decision to keep our kids safe by not allowing access to the library, because if you get into the library, you can very easily access everything in the high school and the middle school. So by keeping our kids safe and secure by closing off the library during the day, I think we have done a disservice to the people of the community. And I will speak just in the age ranges that I see. Our daycares no longer can have that story time experience during the day. I have my son and his wife go to school in West Central. They live halfway between Hartford and Sioux Falls. They would regularly come and utilize story time during the daytime hours. Now, if they wanna go to story time, they are going to the Prairie West branch because it's just as close as coming to Hartford. My daughter-in-law said she really prefers to come to Hartford because the kids who come to story time in Hartford are kids her young ones go to school and to church with. She would prefer to have them have that access to the piers during the day. Story time has been offered in the evening, and when you've got a young family, evening hours don't work well for story time because you're wanting to get your kids fed into bed. So their utilization of our community library during the hours it's open now has impacted dramatically. People who want to use the library during the day perhaps for maybe computer access or the wifi access are limited in the hours. And then I also see it dramatically impacting our senior citizens. As Mr. Barron said, four o'clock in the afternoon, and maybe he didn't say it, but somebody did, four o'clock in the afternoon, especially in the winter, when it's starting to get dark, there really aren't many of them who are willing to come out and venture to the library to use it. And I know that we have a number of senior citizens in our community who still would prefer to have a book in hand as opposed to looking at their Kindle or another electronic device. Quite honestly, I prefer to have a book in my hand rather than looking at a Kindle. So if I need something, I, I am fortunate in that I do some teaching in the school, so a lot of times I can get into the school library during that daytime. But I have found myself perhaps in an evening, when the library has closed at six, and I'm just getting done with what I wanna do for the day, thinking, sure would like to go to the library, maybe check out a movie, maybe check out a book, or a book on CD. No library. Library's closed. But, you know, I could've maybe utilized that during the day in between running errands. So I just feel like in order to serve the needs of the community in the best way that we possibly can, allowing a multitude of opportunities, already talked about by the Sulan people, I think we need to move that library space out of the school. And the school will still have their libraries. You know, if you look at what Humboldt's got, they have a library in the elementary. They also have a community library. So it's very workable for the separate libraries to be in the community. And I just really feel strongly that we need to move it out of the school to a space that's more accessible to community members.
Teresa, I got a question.
Thanks, Linda.
Whose decision is it to move the library, or does, like, does that under your jurisdiction?
Well, they decided to terminate the agreement, and they wanna move somewhere else. If we wanna see an agreement with Sulan, you guys, our board's gotta agree to it. Sulan's board's gotta agree to it as well, and we would enter into a new agreement between just the city and Sulan libraries.
So the city's in agreement to provide funding to Sulan libraries?
Right. You don't provide funding, you provide a facility.
That's what the contract is. The city's responsible for that.
Right, right.
That's what the proposed new one would be.
No, how is it now?
Well, how is it now? We just provide funding, monetary funding?
Right. So where I'm going with this is, if they didn't need eighteen, or eight thousand dollars from the city, say they went out and found private money, and moved it to the senior center, that's not a decision that's, we have to approve.
No, they can.
Right. So the discussion is they're asking for us to help pay for the move?
Yeah, that, that is one of the questions, pardon?
I only think it's exciting as a city council to have two proposals in front of us in one year that expand our downtown.
Yeah.
And invigorate, and so many councils previously have just seen things need for downtown area. I envision a books and brews.
We do have, we do have two book clubs that take place in Brews and Sioux Falls, so we can do that.
Yeah, that'd be a good place to like.
Okay, I guess I guess, just one last thing. Everybody kinda stated it as they were going, but I just wanna make sure that we've got that clear, kind of, to what you're saying. If the council takes no action on this, and, or just doesn't approve it and says, nope, it's not important, I don't do anything with it, would, and you stayed under the current agreement that's there, would Sulan stay with that current agreement that's there right now?
We would, and you would continue funding it at that thirty-four hundred dollars a year. I think you lose your access during the day to that. There is another agreement that exists between Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls that created Sulan libraries. And part of that agreement states that we will have a library in Hartford. And if we wanted to dissolve, we would have to have citizen meetings beforehand to, to discuss that. So we are in no intent of moving outside Hartford. However, we can only work within whatever facility that you, the citizens, provide.
Okay. And with that said too, I mean, as far as the school district goes, at this point, if the council took no action and things stayed the same, nothing changes on your half, is that, is that correct?
Correct. Sulan stays in that current facility.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you got all that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be clear on it.
And then, Jody?
Jody, I just have a quick question, and just for clarification purposes. My understanding has always been that part of the city, just being a city, part of their responsibility is providing a space for the library. Am I correct in that, or, or not?
You know, I don't know that I'm the most qualified to answer that, but I, do we, I don't know that we have a contract or an obligation, you know, that, that says we have to.
We have nothing in our ordinance or, like you said, a contract or an agreement to obligate us to provide it. I mean, it definitely is a community service, so I mean, yeah.
And as far as the funding goes, I met with CECOG last week to talk about possible funding scenarios through grants. And lastly, with CECOG, we'll find several grants that would fit into this category. And now we're doing more research to see if those grants have any requirements on construction time. For example, if we move forward this, you know, immediately, start construction on the space, it might disqualify us from some grants. And so since time is initially, we're gonna make sure we're doing our, our research on that. Adequately. But we thought between the South Dakota Community Foundation, the Sioux Falls Community Foundation, and the Hartford Community Foundation, there'd be more than enough funds to cover a project like this.
Think we can maybe utilize some of the downtown committee funds?
Yep, that's, that's your guys' choice. We certainly can. I, I think there's some funding out there that could cover the, you know, construction costs.
A little confused, if you don't mind, just one quick question. See on page two of three, Jesse, where you made, mentioned CECOG. Who would be the main facilitators of the grant process? Would it be your staff, Jody?
Yeah, it would be your staff.
It'd be our staff.
It would be, it would be the city applying for.
And it would be, depending on the grant, we did some research, research on this as well. It might be the city applying on behalf of the senior citizen center, since it's their facility. And if I'm not mistaken, there are also a non-for-profit 501(c)(3). And the city would qualify for many of those grants. It all depends on the language and requirements of the grant itself.
Does senior citizen center have a 501(c)(3)?
We won't.
Do you have a nonprofit documentation?
Joanne can answer that.
Yep, she can.
Yes, you do. Okay, thank you. Okay, good.
All right. In the essence of time, it was, it was meant to be on there as a discussion item. What I would suggest is, Council, if you got other questions, make sure we get them out. Get them to, get them to Jesse, get them to Teresa, get in touch with Joey, get in touch with Superman Barron's, you know, any of those kinda things. And let's have this on the agenda for May. And let's have this on the agenda for May first, I believe is our next meeting. And try to get, let's, you know, talk to the public too. And make sure you're, you know, we're hearing things from the public that were, that were making about that before making decisions coming up on this. Go from there. Thank you, everyone who's here and presenting and talking on that. And look forward to more discussion coming up, so. All right, with that, we'll move on to reports. First one up is Chamber of Economic Development report.
Not done with it yet. There we go. March is a nice busy month in the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development world. For me, it's kind of, it's my life, so yeah. Congressman Kristi Noem, who's also made for governor, she was here. Shows a form on housing and stomping grounds for the Chamber of Commerce.
I'll have to just. Hey, we'll need to have a discussion. We just have to keep it in the hallway. All right, go ahead, Jesse.
Congressman Kristi Noem was here stomping grounds, doing the story, right, and she was doing part of a tour. Talked about different issues that are affecting South Dakota. Friday was focused on housing. And so KSFY was more to the shooting, talking about housing. We had a story actually come out about this. They wanted to talk about some problems in Hartford for housing. One issue we talked about was senior housing, the need for more twin homes, zero entry spots that are affordable and that have HOA of some type involved. And Ellie Stewart, that was interviewed by KSFY, that had a great story on Ellie and what inspired her to move to Sioux Falls from Hartford. Ain't a chance to look at that yet, please. If you Google KSFY Hartford, it'll come up, and it's a great story. The Chamber had quarter one seminar on top of security at Pizza Ranch. Darren Anderson with Score Sioux Falls presented on the topic. Work continued on the newsletter for the first quarter. We had our March membership mixer at Central Valley Great Life. Great Life put together a great event for the Chamber membership, made about twenty, twenty-five attendants. Thank you to all that attend. HADC working on continuing work with the proposed brewery downtown Hartford. Met with this library group throughout the month of March. Worked on the HADC's RFP. I mean, worked on the, what advertised for the HADC Center Program. We had four applicants. We ordered three grants. One to Blue Forty-two slash Dakota Plains Event Center, Bus CPA, and Grow Cut Inc. slash American Sports. And so one of the requirements for that grant is that the work must be done first before money is distributed. And we had five thousand dollars to give out this first round, give out another five thousand in round two, which will be in September. So stay tuned for any signage happening in Hartford. Worked on a few projects that came my way that did not come into fruition. Part of this job is taking phone calls and working on different ideas that may or may not work. And most of the time they don't work, but it's a fun process to go through and talk to people that are excited about opening businesses in Hartford. Regional standpoint, West Central School District is proposing an opt-out. The vote is on May fifteenth. They're proposing a opt-out of the tune of up to four hundred thousand dollars a year for four years. This subject has the potential to significantly impact Hartford's growth one way or another. The Chamber of Commerce is holding a West Central opt-out panel discussion on April thirtieth at six P.M. at the Dakota Plains Event Center. Would urge you all to be in attendance to learn more about the issue and to meet more public on that. Attended the month of the Kida meeting, and which will be happening also tomorrow. It's the third Wednesday of the month. And upcoming events, well, the community healthcare was canceled by proportion through to the weather. On Thursday, Chairman Cindy Hyberg, the Minnehaha County Commission, will be here for a conference of copy of stomping grounds. Make it seven A.M. If you can make it, that'd be a great event. I believe she's a Tribe Valley School District resident. She just lives in the country. April twenty-first, there's a dog waste station recutting to be happening. If you can be there, it's a great project the Girl Scouts have put together to help clean up our parks and create a clean space for many of the dog owners that live in town. April twenty-sixth, we have membership mixer host for Live in Dakota, the Chamber. And I will be in Sioux Falls for the Mays Conference from May second through May fourth. And that's about a good summary of the month of March. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Jesse, I will be at the Dog Waste Ribbon Cut.
Great.
Dog Waste Station.
We can do one of those too. Do I? Just, I'm sure there's some downtown I can find.
I'll have my dog until.
Great. It's BYOD.
I noticed that on the bike. I noticed that.
You know, Arson's done a great job of putting this thing together, and she put a lot of work into the advertising for the event.
Not going turkey hunting with all this.
All right. Any questions for Jesse? Thank you. Thanks, Jesse. All right. Chief Schumacher, the bright corner report.
Mayor, councilors, good evening. Recap of March, doesn't seem like we're, should be mid-April already, but I guess we are. We ran eighteen total calls in March, seven of them within the city limits of Hartford. Training for March EMS, we trained on waveform capography and entitled COT monitoring in patients. Fireside, we trained on firefighter structural bailout, reading a fire, and items leading to a mayday response, working on firefighter safety. April side EMS, we trained on patient ventilation and airway support. Fireside, we are going to be doing a controlled burn and working on structural fire dynamics. Kind of on a different topic, we received the community's ISO rating back. We have moved from a class five to a class four rating. With that, we gained approximately ten rating points since our last rating. The last rating was in two thousand and seven. We came in at sixty-seven point one eight points out of a possible one hundred and five point five. It puts us just a little under three points shy of moving to a class three department. So we're going to continue working to gain those three points. We're able to ask for a reclassification at any point in time, so we're going to analyze where our gaps are and try and close those.
Did he indicate what it's going to take? Because I mean, it's pretty good to be at a four for your evaluation. And to get down to three would be also impressive.
We just received the documents not very long ago. We need to get together, analyze where those gaps are, and try and put together a plan to achieve that three status, which is in turn going to help homeowners business property insurance throughout the coverage area. That classification will be going into effect July one.
Just out of curiosity, what Sioux Falls at?
Sioux Falls is a class one. They are one of three hundred departments in the nation to be at that level.
Yeah, that's amazing, because I did a lot of insurance work, and I mean, we never saw one. It was always a three at most.
So we're on the virtue of three. And I want to thank city staff for helping in this process. As I said, we're going to work to continue to try and get to that next level if possible. And the only other thing I have for you is we are hosting a fundraiser pancake feed on May sixth from eight until one. And invite everybody to come and eat breakfast with us.
Saw the signs around town.
So any questions from the council?
I just, and that reclassification, you mentioned it's been since two thousand and seven?
Two thousand and seven was the prior one. Right now, they recommend a recap, reclassify, reclassification approximately every three years is the new standard on it. And we are able to reclassify at any time on our request.
Questions?
Listen, we had just done that two years ago.
I think the city had one just three years ago. It didn't encompass the fire department and all of their assets. It was on. Do we have the proper building codes in place? Do we have the proper inspections? It's kind of like what we did administratively to be able to ensure we have safe structures and whatnot. So, yeah, about three years ago, the city had one. And at that time, we bumped up residential on that one. And this is just another bump up for commercial to.
Cool, cool.
It's good.
All right, Graham?
You're happy. Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, City Engineer.
We've got a number of action items tonight, so I'm just going to go through the report. Didn't want to save the discussion for the wastewater treatment facility. John was on it in Harrisburg. We want to be part of that discussion, so if we could wait till he gets here for that. But I would want to, Banda Mark Avenue, we're currently underway with the design. And expect to have our construction documents completely made forth. We drafted some easements. Teresa's been in contact with Mr. Hugo about getting those easements in place, and it sounds like he's willing to sign and move forward with them.
So that's for, he has agreed to, and I'll send email to you guys for giving us utility easement on Banda Mark, a twenty-foot utility easement, so we can run this road straight. So he said just draw up the documents and send them to him and discuss the easement, so we'll get them in the mail to him.
We're going to continue moving forward too with anticipating the road project down the road with Hlots and easements that we might, are going to need for that project as well, so that city staff has those documents here. It's the opportunity arrives that they can get those executed too. Done sitting here.
What do you call Hlots?
Yeah, when you dedicate right away, you do it by filing an Hlot down at the county. So that's how you acquire right away from the developer.
It's just like a plat, but it's just a plat of where the roadway is.
Yeah.
So what are we doing? Are we planning on having you put that together?
What's that?
Are you just nonchalantly asking if you're going to put that together or what?
We're going to put it together as part of the Banda Mark contract that we're under right now. And again, it's, you know, it's a, for us, it's a small thing to do as far as our work goes. But I think it'd be just a good, then have that sitting here for, if we can have the discussion with Hugo at some point about dedicating that right away. I think that'd be a good thing to have. Swenson Park Sports Complex, I see we have that later on in the agenda. We attended a, you know, a meeting with the committee, provided a few layouts for that, but we didn't discuss that later. So I'll save that discussion for that project. And then on the Mickelson Road, we had bids on two Fridays ago, on the sixth. And we have a letter from Monster for recommendation to award and a list of the contractors that some of the bids on those. We had six bids, three of them were pretty competitive, and three of them, a couple of them around state contractors, not so competitive there. But we felt we got a good, a good result there with the prices that we got. We're ready to recommend award to the whole bid with Sukup Construction at four million. I understand we're still waiting on an easement document, if you want to try and introduce any.
Yeah, I do. So here's where we're sitting. Like I said, we, we had all our documents in place, signed the easements and deeds or whatnot. Everything is still good to go, except for on Mr. Assam's property. He signed the original easements and whatnot and provided them to us. But because of his business situation, all the land was supposed to be under Trevor Creek Holdings. Now he has a partner that he's working with too. So we needed to redo those easements, so it reflects, you know, the correct owners of the property, not just him. We have to have all owners on the property signing the correct easements and the deeds. They learned about this last week, so we redid the documents. We got them sent over to him. Unfortunately, his partner is out of town. We thought he would be back Sunday night to sign them. He didn't come back. He's not supposed to be back till tonight now. So I have facsimiles of the documents, but not the original signed ones. So I don't know how comfortable we are moving forward with awarding the bid without having those original documents in place. Larry and Meyer recommending we should have all documents in place before we actually award the bid. I mean.
Was it my imagination or was Sam?
The plane may crash. Who knows?
No, that was a visualization.
Yeah, Sam.
He was here. We knew when we were coming in.
He thought he was.
I was saying, I thought he was going to be here, and he was here.
He said, I think my stuff's over. I'm going home.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
He said what?
He thought we were done with his section because we were in the library part.
Because I said it'd be good if you show up, and I said if you can persuade the council to move ahead.
We got a cell phone number. Call them up.
The impression I got is we'll have them sign here by tomorrow or something.
Can we make a motion subsequent? Can you get those or?
That's all up to you.
We have time. We have thirty days to award the contract, by the contract. So I would prefer, if you were going to get them signed tomorrow, we talked about a special meeting.
Who signs contracts, Teresa?
Who signs?
Jeremy, who signs it?
The original ones?
Or is it a motion to award?
It's a motion to award.
That's all it is?
Yes. So I really believe we'll have the documents tomorrow. I mean, as soon as he's back, we'll pick up the originals and we'll have everything, so I'm confident in that, but.
So why don't we just do the, like they were saying, why don't we just do a contingent motion?
You know, that's up to you, or we, I mean, I did think of, we've got a couple members present on Thursday night. We could just wait a couple days, ensure that we got everything and do a special meeting just to award it.
I don't, I don't know that, we're reviewing employee manual.
Yeah, yeah, we had an immediate, so I know Scott and Mark will be around here and Jeremy, so we get a couple.
You don't want to, you don't want to award a four million dollar contract on a contingency? What's the problem?
I know.
I don't.
I'm going to make a motion we award the contract for three million nine hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars and nine hundred ninety-nine, or whatever it was, to Sukup Construction contingent upon the remaining contracts being signed.
I would put a date on them. Be assigned by Thursday again or later.
Yeah, by.
Because we want to, I'd be able to file them before we send out award contracts and everything.
By five o'clock Friday.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody need to hear that again?
What? Where's the bird down?
More discussions?
You got it. Speak for making motion.
All right, we'll vote. Jones?
Yes.
Keel? Horn? Nelson?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
And Monah?
We'll just make sure we have those documents before any award letters go on or any of that stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
On the agenda, we also have an approval for wetland agreement for the Tonka Wetland Bank. That is also included in your packet. This is similar to what we went through with Mike Franken Trail. We had those wetlands that we had to mitigate. We have a significant number amount of wetlands on this project that we're mitigating. This agreement is a total of one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars worth of wetlands that we're mitigating on that area to the DeTonga Facility. So we need this agreement approved to move forward with the project as well.
Make a motion to approve the agreement with the DeTonga Wetland Bank.
Discussion? Nelson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Monah?
Yeah.
All right. All right, are you prepared to move on to the other?
Yeah, maybe I'll just, I'll hit on the rest of the items in my report quickly and then move back to the wastewater. But Mike Franken Trail, we're still waiting for things to clear out, for the contractor to finish his work. That, remember that is Sukup Downers, we'll have the same contractor kind of doing voltage projects. On the force account side, we've been helping redo the NAPs landing engineering some middles, and we just got those back to the developer. They have since resubmitted new ones for us to hook through. So I'll be doing that here over the next couple of days. Been helping with the sports complex and industrial park planning, working with city NAPs and some south street exhibits. I forgot one thing. I want to mention Ross to you guys too from our office. Ross Cook is an engineer. He's been with our company for four years.
Close to four.
Close to four years, and he's a newly licensed engineer, so he'll be working on the project. He's been very involved with the design, um, of the project, will be out there inspecting it for you guys and, and doing that, that side of things for us as well.
He responds to me when Mitch doesn't.
So I want to introduce him, he'll, we'll probably have him attend your guys' meetings to, to give you updates on the project. So he has a cell phone number and a home number. Teresa's got all that. Okay, um, John, we're just getting to wastewater.
Yeah. Hi Ken.
Yeah.
Hi guys, how are you?
She's young.
Uh, what you guys have in front of you is a proposal, I appreciate you, uh, reaching out to us and, um, and moving forward to the first step. Uh, it seems like, uh, it seems like just yesterday, but it was already almost a year ago when we presented the wastewater options. And it just seems like time flies, and if you don't, uh, start moving on some of this stuff, it just, it just creeps past you and before you know it. We're, you know, three, four years down the road and we haven't done anything. And so I, you know, I think, I think you guys should be commended for moving forward with this, uh, this first step. Which is, uh, what we have in front of you is to help you work through the land discussion and, uh, and looking at opportunities downstream for potential areas for the wastewater treatment facility, if you were to move it downstream. Um, looking at, uh, annexation of different parcels. Once we, once we have established a, um, location for the treatment facility or not necessarily treatment facility, or just something downstream. Um, you know, we would look at a fly line, what, what we call a fly line, which means, uh, you know, is, uh, the gravity sewer and the gravity creek as it flows down to the, um, uh, Skunk Creek. Obviously, that's where we wanna run a trunk sewer in the future. Uh, you know, obviously we wanna follow that alignment so that that makes it easy to construct, if you will. And so what we'd like to do is help you out with, uh, you know, discussing, uh, help your staff and, and, uh, and maybe one of you folks actually meet with some different property owners and work on annexation, first of all. And a possible alignment and preliminary work towards where would that trunk line run? Where would that, your future wastewater treatment facility sit? And, you know, how would that impact the city and how would that impact the area? So I think we wanna make sure that we're working diligently with the neighbors downstream, making sure that we're all working together with them. And I think, uh, getting an early start on that is a, is a good sign that, uh, we can work with those property owners, so. Uh, what you have in front of you is basically a proposal for us, for us to help you, uh, meet with those, uh, eight to ten different property owners. Discuss annexation, uh, and how that may or may not impact them. Uh, discuss, uh, potential purchase of land for the future, uh, wastewater treatment facility. And s- and just, uh, anticipate where that may go. And then look at, once that's secured, we look at preliminary grade line and update cost estimates to the facilities plan we put together for you, um, about a year ago. So I'd be glad to answer any questions for you and, uh.
I have two questions. Uh, so this contract in, in my mind, this contract gives us from start to finish minus the design of a plant.
A plant, yeah, yeah, I mean, this is very, this, wow, let me clarify.
How, how far does this get us?
This gets you over the next two years, meeting with, uh, residents, uh, working on annexation agreements with those residents. Working on a preliminary grade line of the trunk sewer that's running down there, uh, wherever that would end up. Whether it's on the north side of the interstate, south side of the interstate, wherever we, uh, think is most beneficial. Or feasible, uh, and then, uh, it actually establishes then a location and potential seller of land.
Okay, so then, when all, when all that is said and done. Then, then the next step is a contract that says what?
Preliminary design for the facility.
Yep.
And collection system, so the gravity line getting to there and the treatment facility.
So the next contract will be preliminary design and?
Yes.
And pipe.
Yes.
And then the next contract will be?
Final design.
Final design and completion.
Right.
So this is the first of three contracts?
Yes. And keep in mind, first of all, this is very early on, I mean, cause there'll be a, there'll be a whole nether push towards, uh, planning. And updating these costs, cause you're gonna have to go to the state to try to get funding for this facility, whether it's loans and grants. And so there's gonna be a process in that preliminary design that will, will, uh, start out. You know, when we get into this next phase, we'll be helping you get funding.
Yeah, but I've been here long enough, and you've been around long enough, then down the road, somebody's gonna say, we already signed the contract for this.
Yeah, this is, this is a little.
This is, this is step one of three.
Yeah.
In a five-year plan.
Yeah, good point. This is, this is just the lay of the groundwork of where that may, where your, where your treatment facility may land. And at that point, uh, you know, then you're, you're gonna look at, you know, pretty significant dollars for, uh, the design agreement. And, um, and, and construction agreement with a contractor to build that facility within that five to seven year period when we have identified a, a facilities plan.
So ultimately, this is probably a two-year, two-and-a-half-year contract.
This one here, we had two years identified, it all depends on how that property owner discussion, uh, goes. If it happens fast, you know, it could happen within a year, and then you could sit, in my opinion, you could just, um, uh, sit on an option. And until you're, uh, you know, start discharging out of, I don't wanna say discharging out of compliance, but get very close to discharging out of compliance to the point where you wanna pull the trigger to that, for your design. Um, you know, we're, the way we had estimated, if the economy keeps going the way it's going, you know, you're five to seven years out. You're gonna start hitting out of compliance discharges, uh, within three to five years, uh, we anticipate. And so it with, with, uh, with the continued growth, if we hit a recession, you know, which, you know, if we do hit a recession, you know, you in a sense, it's gonna buy us some time, but you're not gonna grow as fast.
But ultimately, in the grand scheme of things, this is the first contract.
Yes, that's right.
Of a three-contract process.
Right.
Covers, should hypothetically cover the first two years of a five-year plan.
Yes, and I would actually.
And it's an hourly rate not to exceed.
Seventy-something, seventy-two thousand. And I, I would say that next phase could be two phases or it could be a single phase, it depends on where you guys.
Wherever.
How comfortable you feel moving forward with that final design at the same time. Um, we'll wanna, we'll wanna evaluate that at that point.
Yeah. We're gonna look at all of the options, right?
Yeah.
We're not just, for sure, going?
One direction.
One direction.
That's what this contract.
That's what this is. I mean, there's, generally, we'll wanna move south and east, easterly, uh, if you will, towards Skunk Creek. Is, is that what you're referring to? Yeah. And whether that, we end up on the south side of the interstate, north side of the interstate, it's all gonna depend on what's feasible and what, what works for us.
So we're not even looking at putting it where the ponds are now?
I would say that that would be our, our, uh, fallback solution, if you, if we were unsuccessful in securing, uh, downstream. I think from a big picture standpoint, we wanna move downstream, uh, that's what we've recommended anyway. Uh, you know, if you wanna maintain where you're at right now, you certainly have room to build a small mechanical plant at that location. It's whether or not you wanna ma- leave it there, you know, because it's now gonna be in, you know, very close proximity to the city, which is very common in a lot of communities, it's, uh, it's not something that you have to do. It's certainly, certainly something you can do, so.
But of first, Kate, I mean, I understand the thought to leave it where it's at, but then you're implementing a lot of lift stations. So that's gonna be years and years, I mean, how many times do we sit here and listen to Craig talk about the bearing went out? The impeller broke, the parts are coming from Germany on a rowboat. You know, this brand new pump we bought last year, you know, they discontinued the bearings for it last week. I've, I've heard Craig say that so many times, I wanna pull my hair out.
To answer your question, I mean, that was certainly an option that we talked about, is just coming, you know, staying right at our current location. I think that was a, you know, a very viable option, and for some reason, we can't work our way downstream. The only reason we were thinking downstream is so that we, we relocated our treatment facility, you know, out of town.
I get that, but you're talking a lot of miles of pipe.
Yeah.
And work.
Yes.
And cost.
Yep. What you would do is you would do a recovery on the pipe, uh, and think of it this way, is the community continues to grow easterly. You know, with Assam's property going downstream.
Which has lift stations right now.
Right.
It will.
With, and right, and that moves it back up.
Yeah.
And in the future, if, if you could just imagine that that trunk line has to be there anyway. So the closer we get it to the creek, the better off we're gonna be, rather than bringing it back up here to discharge it, to flow back downstream. And so there's two ways of looking at that, and I certainly understand when, you know, we looked at it, the two different options are, they're very similar in cost. Whether or not we move clear downstream or stay here, just because of the, the amount of lift stations, you know, that we would be building downstream anyway. To bring it back here.
In any event, we move it downstream, I mean, we still, we still have property that can be repurposed.
Yeah.
It opens up a lot of developing land.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know.
If we move it downstream, it'll open it up a lot sooner.
At a lower cost, at a lower, uh, cost, year in and year out for the city, in, in maintenance.
I mean, the other thing, yeah, you know, this is, you're right, I mean, this is good prime property here that we'd be able to redevelop. Or, and resell if you wanna sell it, or redevelop into something else in the future, so.
Geez, we could give it to the HADC and call it moved down for a while.
Maybe a few days.
The real part of this, uh, the rubber starts to make the road more when you, uh, acquire property rights.
At this point, really what we're trying to do, what we identified and spoke was, meet with the property owners downstream. See what discussed with them, what is the opportunity for them to annex? Cause if we can, we can convince those property owners to annex, but yet not change their zoning. Cause if zoning, as long as that doesn't change, your taxes don't change. Uh, but still annex, the value of that is that that becomes in our zoning jurisdiction, and we don't need to do a conditional use permit that's outside the city limits.
When you say annex, Johnny, you're talking hard for my soul.
No, no, I, and not, you know, no, I'm not. I'm talking about bare land, uh, just establishing a, a route. You know, you can't just, uh, move downstream and then, uh, buy a piece of property and try to annex it. You gotta be contiguous with your city limits, and that's really the reason we're trying to establish a contiguous, uh, boundary all the way down to the creek. If that's possible, if it's not, you know, we may end up with, uh, back to our existing site. And that's what we talked about in our facility, I mean, that was our fallback, if we can't move downstream, our fallback, we stay where we're at. And, cause we've got room right there, we can build right, uh, we're cell three, the area at cell three we go, that's a, a great location. That was what it was planned for, future expansion, and that certainly could go right there. And we've got the land purchased and, you know, it's all located here. The, probably the downside of that is it's, uh, it's, it's right here in town now. You know, that was out of town before, behind the road and, you know, that was.
Well, that, you have to pump it all the way back just to let it go back down.
Yep, and we, you know, we're growing into it is really what it belongs to. And I think we're gonna start seeing a little more odor with that, those lagoons, because they're getting fuller all the time. Uh, you know, when they were first built, we didn't have the odor, uh, we're getting more of that because it's getting more concentrated. And we're not able to discharge as often and things like that before it gets too full. So you're gonna start probably getting a few more complaints about that, and so if we can move it downstream, I think we certainly do that because it makes sense for, um, you know, just, uh, feasibility and just common sense to me, uh, to move it downstream.
Well, I, I'm, I for one am, uh, I'm pleased that we're having a conversation five years out. Because you don't wanna have these discussions five months out? Cause it's not, it's not, it's really not good.
If, if you look at it right now, you know, your facility's lasted about eighteen, I think we're at eighteen years, Craig? You know, I mean, and, and so it was a twenty-year life, you know, that's where we were at. And, you know, we're gonna get about twenty-two to twenty-five years out of that before we, uh, you know, we're gonna start discharging out of compliance. And that's really what it belongs to, cause we're getting a lot of, uh, flow we're getting to that facility is, is getting such that we're not gonna, you know, we're gonna get we're gonna start discharging out of compliance, and that's, that's, and the state will start, you know, talking to us about that too, so.
Teresa, so this is, uh, kind of materials, basically, with the funding for this to come out of the sewer fund?
Yeah. It would have to come under the sewer fund.
It won't need to make any special, uh, it won't need to make any special allocations at the end of the year?
No, but it's gonna deplete your sewer reserves quite a bit with that and the Bandomark project. So you're aware of that, cause we did not budget this.
Right.
Yeah. It was a certain volume, and we weren't gonna build anything beyond that until next year.
Yeah, in our actual force account of engineering, we did bump it up about fifteen thousand dollars just to kinda start preliminary talks, but. So we do have fifteen thousand more than what we did the previous year, just cause we thought we'd get these talks started, so. Um, it wasn't, you know, full encompassing like this is. So I guess you can consider this fifteen thousand less that we already have built into the budget.
And, and what, what we would, would do is, is only bill out whatever you have budgeted this year, and then we can wait and bill out the remainder, whatever we get into after the first of the year.
Build a budget in my ear. You call it good.
You stepped right in that one, didn't you?
Yeah, but this, this isn't upfront billing though, is it? This is bill as you go, right?
Bill as you go, and that's what we, I, we talked to Teresa about that. We'd only bill for, it, it was fif- I thought seventeen thousand, but we'd only bill the fifteen thousand out this year, as long as we can get it budgeted for next year. And then, you know, this was a two-year deal anyway, cause we think it'll be a process. You know, it's something that we're gonna have to build a relationship with these folks and, and actually work that, uh, you know, just make sure we're you know, we don't wanna develop, you know, hardships out there, wanna make sure we're developing a good relationship with people that are gonna be eventually developing their land, they're gonna benefit because there's gonna be a trunk sewer that's running through their property, so eventually that's gonna be a benefit, that they're gonna be participating in the payment of that trunk sewer too, so keep that in mind, so.
Alright. Any questions for John?
I'm going to approve agreement for professional services, Stockholm Engineering, Stockholm Project Number One Eight Zero Nine Two.
Mike?
Brennan?
Brennan, sorry.
You still up for me? Still your thunder?
Alright, discussion?
Just a general knowledge question for me. What was our expectancy on the funds? Are we eighteen-year, or, uh, twenty-year?
Twenty, twenty-five, yeah, twenty-five years or forty-six hundred population?
Yes, it was, it was, he's right, forty, forty-four hundred, I thought, but, uh, but we're not there. Uh, but we're, it's, we're running into some other issues with, uh, the treatment on, on that side. That's why we, we get into trouble right in the spring of the year.
Has it been twenty years or?
Eighteen, eighteen, we're right at eighteen right now, and, and we.
Have the standards changed, Greg? Are the standards tighter now than they were eighteen years ago?
No, they've been, they've held the same, we haven't actually got our new, um, permit yet to, they've been, they're behind about four years with it, but, um. It, um, they haven't changed, it's just that we have pretty tough, uh, our permit's pretty tight because of, uh, we're dis- discharged into an unnamed tributary of the Skunk Creek, which is a recreation facility. Along with the big sewer and that stuff, so we have tight parameters, I mean.
Anyway, yeah.
Yeah, it's always been tight.
In the next seven to ten years, we're anticipating the EPA to come out with tighter standards on nutrient removal. And, you know, that was something that we had talked about in your study, that we were gonna include that in the design. Cause we anticipate that, uh, once you develop, work into your treatment facility, you have stricter standards to meet at, at that point, and so, um, nutrient removals are gonna be, you know, they're already being implemented in Iowa and in, uh, Minnesota. And they're coming to South Dakota in the next seven to ten years, is what we've been told by. and they're coming to South Dakota in the next seven to ten years, is what we've been told by.
I think Sioux Falls might already be into it, aren't they?
Not yet, no, they have to have it within their, uh, they've got a, they've got about ten to twelve years before they're gonna be, the city's told them that. They just came out with their study, they just presented their wastewater master plan to the State Council in Sioux Falls, and that's, uh, twelve or thirteen years from now, the state's gonna require them to have nutrient removal implemented into their treatment plant, which is spendy dealing. It's bad toward treatment costs, and Sioux Falls is gonna be implementing it.
You don't have to pick up the paper or turn on the news too often to get the impression that the water you discharge is better than the water we're discharging into?
Most of the time, yes, very much so.
I'm a firm believer that when we discharge, we are improving the quality of the Scott Creek.
No doubt about it, for sure. And that's the way most, every treatment plant is, they're all that way. Um, you know, the tr- the quality of the water is really, you know, good, short of being disinfected and going back to, uh, another process for drinking water, there could be a, you know, like, closed-loop system or something, it's already possible, believe me, it's already possible, it just isn't, uh, possible.
All right, well, we got motion. Do we, uh, any more discussion?
Just one quick question, um, item, uh, three-one, um, meet with individual property owners regarding possible land acquisition. What's the standard operating procedure for that? Knock on their door and say, hey, hey, come? Send a letter first, try to send an appointment?
Well, I think it's, I think it's, uh, what, what I've been successful with in, uh, Harrisburg, for example, is, is just reaching out to those business, businesses or property owners and just asking to sit down and have a cup of coffee. Um, we've, uh, we've been pretty successful in that, with that approach, and we would recommend or suggest that we, that one of you folks come with us, Teresa for sure, so it's, uh, you know, it's not stock well, it's, it's the city of Hartford approaching you and just talking about our future. And that's what we gotta start, we gotta build that relationship, and then, uh, you know, work towards, uh, you know, hopefully they realize that it's a common goal, that they're gonna have a valued property in the future with the trunk line that's running down it. Uh, the people that, that are downstream, that's probably the ones that are probably gonna push back because of the treatment plant, you know, next to them. And so, you know, whether that's next to an industrial intersection, um, would be a good, I think it's gonna be good, we wanna set back off the interchange, but, uh, you know, that interchange, if you will, is starting to become, you know, kind of an industrial interchange, uh, with the semcas out there, and, uh, I can see additional, uh, industrial developments out of that area, so I think it's a great location for, you know, a treatment plant too. But we'll wanna set back away from the actual frontage of the interstate, obviously, because we don't wanna take up any of that property, but, uh, we'll wanna be, you know, conscious of where we go, I mean, we wanna make sure that we're making a long-term decision here, because I think this next, uh, move is, you know, is not a twenty-year move, it's, it's a forty or fifty-year move for you guys, um, I don't see us, uh, I, I see you just expanding this facility at that location. Uh, you know, and you could do the same thing here, don't get me wrong, this could be a twenty-year, or, another twenty or forty-year location also, uh, but just, you know, as a, from a big picture, we've kind of identified that we feel it's probably a better move to move downstream. All right.
Well, you know, ultimately, that was planned eighteen years ago.
Yeah, we, we've run into some roadblocks there, and back then, if you remember, uh, you know, we couldn't do what we can do today, and that is, annex into the city limits, but not change their zoning, so their taxes don't change, that's a difference from then to.
Well, and, and we ran out of time the last time, you know, I mean.
We were compliant, just very compliant, ready to.
All right, let's call the vote.
Yeah.
Kim?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yep.
Lauren?
Yeah.
And Nelson?
Yes, thank you, and you got it, thank you.
John, John? Hey, he's ready for it. Any other things on your report bench?
Nope, that's all.
Thank you. All right, Craig?
I'm just gonna hit through the spots here on my report, um, mulvvar trees, we usually plant, uh, next week, but it doesn't look very promising right now, so. We'll get it, just a matter of whether this weather cooperates enough with it, so. Cold Road, um, they are coming up May fifteenth, will be the one-year inspection on that, along with the bike trail, um, we'll be getting together with J S A and the county and walking through all that, making sure that everything in the city limit area is up to our standards and is still holding up together, and, and right, so. If you have any issues with it, we'll get it on a punch list, get it taken care of and fixed.
Have you noticed anything?
I haven't yet, uh, none of that part of it, no. So, I have a tad of chance to really walk it either or check it over, so I'll be trying to get up there soon here and look it over. Um, water, basically, the, uh, quarter of the reports have been filled out and sent in, same with D M R's for sewer, they've been filled in. Back to Lagoons, um, we are filling up, um, we brought samples in last week, got both ponds, we did a blend with them. Uh, we're gonna try a little bit different blend, um, tomorrow, and hopefully we'll get results back, we're gonna push the pH right up to just low to nine, where our limits are, and that should get us, where our ammonia will be down enough where we can discharge, and hopefully T S S will hold in there, or, we're right on the verge right now of. We've probably got about two weeks and we'll be forced to discharge, so, I mean, we're getting up maybe three weeks right now with this heavy moisture and that content, and not the I N I we have coming in right now, where pumps are running about twice what they should be, so. So we'll be keeping a close eye on that, and like I said, we're gonna try some different blendings with it and see if we can't get two ponds to make one discharge, so, see what we can do. Dog waste containers, like I said, that, we'll be getting that ready for the ribbon cutting, um, Saturday, um, so a lot of that all cleaned up up there and looking at it. Um, hopefully not the, it would be snow to get them in there and find a dog. Parks, basically, we got the bathrooms are ready to go, we just don't have the water on, uh, we do have some countertops that we're putting in, replacing Turtle Creek, I believe they are done. Uh, we put some stainless steel countertops in, that's one of the things we have budgeted for this year, along with some of the other ones in the shelters, we're getting those put into. But, we're hoping, maybe about Thursday or so, we can open them up, I think the, I'll feel comfortable, I think at that time with the weather that we build, open them up without freezing them, busting the inside of them, so. Sports Complex, still kind of, I got a bunch of stuff to get, like, like, I probably just had that chance, I tried to call Travis last week, just talked to him a little bit about it, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Matt. Um, going three-phase, it all depends on how soon you think we're gonna have all lights out there, we're not gonna have all lights for a while. Uh, we'll be paying about forty dollars a month more for three-phase, and we will for single-phase, and that's kind of, so it's four hundred and eighty dollars more a year, just for electricity out there. We're not gonna have lights for quite a while, it's probably, you know, flip a coin, what's the best way to go out there, I mean, so, I wanna talk to, like I said, meet with Travis a little more, to meet with, uh, Ryan, uh, with Sue Elliott, and then meet with Matt again a little bit more, and just kind of figure out what's the best way for, to go right now.
It's like everything else out there, it's cheaper the longer you wait, so.
It's cheaper the longer you wait.
Heavy sarcasm.
Um, I was, that's about it, my report, um, do you have anything for me?
Do you need some kind of certification thing here?
Yeah, that, I guess, wait till I have a few questions answered, I'll bring that up.
All right.
I had some comments about the snow removal. Like, not going curb-to-curb, or in certain areas of town?
We tried to in certain areas of town, we just couldn't get to it.
Yeah.
Um, just got too high on us, pushing up wherever drifted in bad, yeah, there was areas where four feet from it, so. It wasn't deliberate, um, you know, last time, the snow before, we only had that four inches, we didn't throw it up in the yards and up in the driveways, and we just kind of slushed it over and let Mother Nature in it.
Well, it was the second time I've heard it, and it's regarding whole pole, pole in that way.
I tried, I was up there and I could, I even tried the next day to push the law back, I just, we'd have to go up there with payload.
They did the last one, it was torn, they complained also, so it's not just those.
Yeah, the last one, we deliberately left it short for the curb, just 'cause you don't wanna run the curbs if you can help, you try to stay off them this time of year, because you'll bust them. There's no support behind them, frost out, but, yeah, this last time, I know it's ways away from there, and all we can get it out now is go up there with the payload and push, get it pushed back.
And then, did we do any maintenance on trees in, along the streets recently?
Uh.
Last fall you did, yes.
Well, we did some about three weeks ago, they cut a bunch, three weeks ago, so.
Was my house one of them?
I couldn't tell you. Possible.
It looked like they got cut recently, and, and mine was one of them, and I did not notice.
Yep, and that's one of the discussions.
People, I mean.
Usually, just when it gets time to go around, they'll take loaders out and just trim everything so the trucks ain't empty, is the main reason why we're trimming them up, so.
But that may change.
Yep, that's one thing we talked about, a little bit about the policy of what changes and some of that, so we'll see what happens.
I'll, I'll just make one comment, being some marker, I don't know, if anybody thinks council gets special treatment, uh, somebody in the payloader cleaned out my intersection directly on top of my sidewalk, which I was really excited about, because I didn't think I had to do my sidewalk. Then the next day, they came after it got really sun-baked for a day, and literally turned into wet cement. Then they came with the payloader, moved a pile from the sidewalk to my front lawn, then I had to shovel it after it weighed about three times what it weighed the day before. So.
You should be nicer to cities.
It was cleaner this time.
Your sidewalk's clean today. I thought it was, we were reminded of the cloud.
You see how much. Did you see my sidewalk?
Not even close.
Yeah, day, day one, day one, I was dancing, day two.
I was allowed to know what the others had.
It must've been too wet to use the snow gates. I decided to throw that.
I know they broke them in Sioux Falls, so I figured that's why we did the.
People didn't know what to do.
Yeah, speaking of storm removal, I didn't hear any complaints, I did drive around on Sunday, um, it, it's probably, uh, something that happens on every storm removal, but, thinking of the Naps landing, um, on Sage Horn, where it kind of bubbles out, or like two or three properties there, you know, the initial pass takes, clears the main road, and then those poor folks were kind of homebound, waiting for the city to get back in there, what's the turnaround time to get all the way or closer to their curb?
You're talking.
Sage Horn must be the.
Oh, that eyebrow out there?
Eyebrow.
The thyuses, yeah.
It gets, uh, treated like the cul-de-sacs, um, because they're time-consuming to get in there, and we don't go in our trucks, so the trucks go through, or maintenance go through, and the payload goes around when they, when we switch over, and it starts cleaning those out, because they're time-consuming, and I told the guys, Terry, I said, if you're in, just push it, take a pass around quick, and then push the rest in the center, till we have time to get it out of there, so.
If you're with, uh, that new development coming, you'd be coming back and looking for an articulated maintain to get those cul-de-sacs.
If you did it the way they, with an articulation like that, you would have those driveways filled in so deep. They're, they're way better off holding back for about three hours before they get out than they're shoveling for ten to get out, so.
Fair enough, like I said, no complaints, I just made an observation.
Nope, and I, I mean, I hate to treat cul-de-sacs like that, but if they don't go through, there's no through traffic on them, so that's why they, and they're time-consuming, that's why they always get put off toward the end of the plowing period, so. And the only thing I had left is there's a class in Sioux Falls, May first, second, third, it is, I believe, a free class through rural water, I'm not doing the certification, because, um, I'm up to my certifications right now at this time, I just, I need some hours, because last year, my daughter got married in September, that's usually where I pick up them hours, so, I've already got to notice that I have to get, like, this twenty-some hours this year in, or thirty or something like that, where to keep my certification up for next year, so. I'll be short next year otherwise, so, this is the only thing that's close by, it's in Sioux Falls, and just back and forth, so.
I think motion to approve, uh, Craig to Tim, in South Dakota, Environmental Resources Certification Deal, whatever they made.
Rural Water Training.
Thank you, Rural Water Training.
Awesome.
Motion accepted. All in favor?
I, I, I. My chair keeps shaking. I want a new chair. I don't think he does neither.
All right.
I'll judge you with the finance officer's.
I, except for Arden, who voted something about his chair.
Okay, so, um, I just have the, uh, finance officer report with the, uh, revenues at the top, um, you'll notice that we have a little bit higher numbers for the first, second, and third penny, but that's due to a payment from February that hit our bank May, uh, March second. So there's three payments that hit in the month, just so you, um, know that, um, I've also provided, um, the committee funds, um, and then, in the bill report section below that, I just highlighted some of the, um, abnormal or higher, um, invoices, um, from the batch that you approved earlier, as well as let you know what the prepaid bills were. Um, I've also included, um, an attendance chart, um, it is time to pay you guys as of May first, and so if you wanna make sure that you take a look at that, and let me know if there's any che- excuse me, changes, um, uh, or any additions that you need to add to that. Um, otherwise, I will be processing the payroll on May first, and you should see that in your accounts on the second. I've also provided a calendar of events. Are there any questions?
What?
You almost got perfect attendance.
I do have perfect attendance.
No, I think you're in this one.
I.
No, because that's probably not on that, he wasn't on.
That was my.
Gold star.
He hasn't missed the.
This is the monumental moment, in six years, I've, this is the, I hadn't come to this one, so I haven't missed one since. Day one.
One in six years?
I've missed one.
In six years. Congratulations, Scott.
Yeah, I tend better here than I do in Florida.
Well, this doesn't work.
All right, so we can get, if, if they, if we got questions offline, we can get in touch with you?
Definitely, just call or email, and, yeah, if you have any changes that need to be made to that, just let me know before May first.
Okay, doesn't, we solved it all?
Yep.
Okay. Questions? Okay, questions for Roger? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and Teresa?
Okay, a couple of quick things, um, we've already touched on, um, the Hugo land, Roger has agreed to give us the utility easements for the sewer line, so we'll get those out to him now that we've gotten from the engineer, and so we can get those signed. Um, the only hiring update I have for you right now is that we did hire one more public works assistant, it is Lee Cookta, we're starting a mall that are starting wage at nine dollars. So, we are good for public works assistants, um, at this point, um, we are still have open for, of course, the code enforcer, an assistant pool manager, um, and maybe a second dump site monitor to fill in, so we're taking application, oh, unlike ours, we're taking applications for those. Um, we do have a few of those in, so I'm gonna look through them this week and maybe start doing some interviews for the code enforcement, and, um, I do have an assistant manager and a, a dump site monitor, so maybe by next go around, we'll have a few of those positions filled as well, so. Um, and just, uh, F Y I, the National Honor Society, we approved a special permit for them to have a run last Saturday, obviously, they postponed that because of the weather, so, it's supposed to be this Saturday, so if you see people out and about, that's the five K that was approved by you earlier. Um, we talked about the I S O rating, I just gave you a little update, you know, we had that little strategic planning session last fall, kind of going, giving you an update of where we're sitting at, you know, what items we've already accomplished, you know, as far as equipment we've purchased, what still needs to be done, as far as action items we've completed, you know, as far as policy updates, what still needs to be done, so, um, kind of just give you a summary of that, if you have any questions about that, um, you know, let me know, we're gonna still continue to move forward with all these items. A couple of things that weren't on there that I just kind of wanted to give you a brief update on as well, um, Nicholson Road, as we're moving forward, um, as you know, we're still trying to, um, secure, um, funding with rural development, we're still working through that with our banks, because the bids came in lower, which is great, we only need about six hundred and fifty thousand versus an extra million, so, I gave those new, new cost figures to our local banks, they are giving me scenarios, I asked them to give me the scenarios of what just a direct. They are giving me scenarios. I asked them to give me the scenarios of what just a direct loan through them would be. And then a guaranteed loan through rural development, so I just wanted to be able to look at all our options. So I've already got some figures back from the Maya Bank, waiting for Great Western, they're supposed to have that this week. So the next meeting, I think I'll be able to bring those funding scenarios to you and we can pick the best option and move forward with it, so. And then I also want to give you one other update, the Women of Today always put on the pet clinics. Used to be, they used to always do one pet clinic in the fall and we would always send a, a city representative out there to do city pet licenses, sit there and license pet as they go through, if they need it. Um, when the new vet clinic went up, they moved it from once a year to twice a year, we've been doing it. Um, the Women of Today, like I said, are a sponsor of that event and for the past few years, they go and they license for the other towns. Lake Falls and Humboldt or whatnot. We are the only ones that send a city employee there to do the licensing. So instead of paying somebody time and a half to go there, um, I asked, we called actually the Women of Today and said, do you have enough personnel to do Hartford's licensing as well? We talked to Roxy Whalen with the Women of Today, she said, yep, we have enough people there, so we told, we won't be there, have a representative there. The Women of Today will just be doing the licensing for the city, so want to let you guys know that as well. Um, that is all I have. It's next Saturday, or this coming Saturday, I should say, twenty first, yep.
Okay, any questions for Teresa?
Alright, old business, we've got Sioux Valley Maintenance Fee, charter developers for maintenance of poles, talked about it in the last meeting, they've changed the way that they go for these, they don't charge us upfront, they charge us on a monthly basis. And um if we upgrade poles, as we talked about having a way to charge developers if they have to quickly upgrade all the poles in. You have to pull them in packet, something like you got together.
Yeah, so we did talk about this last go around, that Sioux Valley has basically changed their billing structure. It used to be one flat rate to us, no matter what kind of pole was in the city, um, as far as the maintenance fee every month. Well now, they've just decided to restructure it, um, the more expensive poles, like the aluminum poles or if you have an ornamental pole. Costs more each month for maintenance than just the basic wooden poles that the city usually puts in. Um, so you know, in the long run, it's costing us more for all these nicer looking ones, but a lot of the developers, like Kelly Pointe has, a lot have done it. You know, it's, it's a nicer look like that feel in their neighborhood. So in the past, when it was all just one flat rate for this monthly rate, the difference between a wooden pole that the city would normally put in. And if they wanted to upgrade to the aluminum poles, the developer would just pay the difference in the cost of the pole. And right now that difference is about six hundred and fifty dollars. Now, since they're not doing that anymore, um, I guess it's up to the council, how you guys want to do this, whether do we want to build that difference? If they want to, you know, a nicer pole there, which is ultimately going to cost the city more in maintenance fees? Or do you want to just absorb that cost and, and we can charge anything in between there too, so that's what's up for discussion.
You had in there, if we stay with the same amount of the signature, it's prob- approximately six and a quarter years worth of cost.
Right, I figured the difference, so we, we'd get, yeah. We'd get, the developer would basically pay about six and a quarter years of that maintenance fee. When obviously lights last a lot longer than that, you know, we call them as fixed assets for twenty five years, so I mean, they last longer than that, but it would cover some of the cost of that.
Just, so just jumping before I forget about it, talking about poles, but um are they scheduled to drop any more overhead this summer? So is it um between May and uh month?
Yes. Isn't it?
Yep, I think that's what they're doing.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's going down. Yep, going on the other side.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Alright, do we have? Council want to talk about this a little bit more, do you have a strong opinion on this as far as charter developers, it's probably coming up soon, six fifty the right number? Do we hire? Do we go lower?
I don't think we go lower.
Seems to be what we've done in the past, the six fifty, right?
Yeah, the difference in the cost, yeah.
I thought you were going to go down, go lower now.
Oh, no, no, no. Oh, not true. Well, unless somebody wants to argue that again.
But uh, I don't know, it's a good work discussing.
Take you a question?
So the same assums of the world come in, I guess we got it for your.
Can, can anyone add, Doug?
I want to go with aluminum, but I guess my mind, the six fifty is probably a fair price. How many years does that cover if you just figure the difference in, from the wood to the aluminum?
Six and a quarter years.
That's the difference, huh?
Yeah, that would be the difference and that, that six fifty a pole would gain the city, yeah.
But for six and a quarter years, then the city is.
Then the city will have to pay the full cost, yeah, for the life of the pole.
Is there any way that a contractor can, can have it laid underground or?
This is just for the light pole itself. The power will be under, underground, oh, okay, I got you, I got you.
I paid six hundred dollars for the poles in hole two.
Or double that though.
No, they're still six hundred.
Well.
Well, that's the difference.
You, you wouldn't pay double, Sioux Valley is, who knows what they've subsidized.
Prices, I bought them from Sioux Valley and that's what the price was at then.
Alright. Unless we have a motion?
If we take no action, what's, what's the current course?
So probably the next time we have, the next developer, and if they want to upgrade to the higher poles, they'll probably come before you again.
And you either tell them to put wooden ones in or aluminum, let them do it.
Or let them do the aluminum, so, yep.
Well, why don't we? What's the proposal, six fifty additional for aluminum?
That's what the difference in the pole is.
That's what they're paying Sioux Valley right now to buy the poles to get them put up, to switch them from wood to aluminum, make the area look nice.
I mean, ultimately, so the city doesn't pay the pole, but we just pay the maintenance.
We just pay maintenance.
At six hundred and fifty dollars, it basically makes up six years of our maintenance fee, of our hiring.
We just kind of looked at the, right now the contractors, if they want aluminum poles, they're already expecting to pay the six fifty. So Sioux Valley's going to tell them, well, you don't have to pay it anymore, the city's going to start absorbing it a different way. So we just thought that'd be a way, they'd still be paying the money, but we'd be having to pay the bills because it's the hires.
So a developer, so a developer doesn't buy poles anymore?
They won't be.
They won't be through Sioux Valley anymore.
They'll be able to get free, so they're going to go aluminum poles if, if you guys, you don't allow it, so.
So you're going to change where they bill for it?
Where would we, where would we? Yeah, so what are we paying now?
I was just going to look.
At what point in the process do we, do we uh recoup our, do we recoup our money? At building from that time, at, at plan zoning time, at, at buy approval time? When, when, when do we charge the developer?
This is the first time we have to start charging it, so I guess.
I would say you did it once it got installed, you just bill them for it, because we have to, we do a street signs, we put up the street signs, we just turn around and bill the contract developer for them.
So in our, in our process, where do we alert that developer to this cost, is my question?
I think we should probably do a preliminary plan time, so they know that upfront, what you think?
Then when we do the stop signs and those types of things?
It's all indoor, yeah, when they, for the design standards, they don't have to pay for them now.
So how they, so, so a developer right now, if they go get wood poles, they don't have to pay for them, they just go get wood poles and then the city is charged X amount of money per month?
Per maintenance on the.
Per maintenance.
Yep.
Yes.
So the developer doesn't pay for the poles, the city at heart doesn't pay for the pole, we just pay monthly maintenance.
Right, as, right now.
That process works the same with aluminum, except the maintenance on aluminum is higher than wood.
Yes, right now, yeah.
Nobody pays money to Sioux Valley.
They used to.
They used to, but they won't.
They won't now, yeah.
So what's our current rate?
I don't have what our current rate is, Sioux Valley just sent me what the difference between the, the wooden ones and aluminum is, and that's a six fifty. Like I said, we don't ever pay for the wooden poles upfront, so I can't even tell you.
What's our maintenance now, what, what are we paying per pole?
Aluminum's are going to be twenty dollars and fifty cents and the wooden's are eleven ninety.
What were we?
The wooden pole stayed the same.
So they've been the same cost.
In twenty sixteen, if a developer wanted aluminum poles, the city had it covered that expense?
No, the developer did in twenty sixteen.
So.
And Sioux Valley billed them directly, that six hundred fifty thousand.
Well, we, we were paying eleven dollars whether it was aluminum or.
We were, yep.
We were.
Now, now we're paying greater much, yeah, for maintenance on.
Sioux Valley is charging us more. Customers get the benefit.
Yeah, basically Sioux Valley's. They're switching the cost over to the city versus developer.
So we're actually going to sell them the poles now? We're actually going to sell them the poles now.
No, they'll still have to get up through Sioux Valley.
There'd just be some type of agreement for what up, that if you want to go aluminum poles, it's going to cost you this much to have installed in city, and then that's where it rolls.
So every developer is going to want the Cadillac instead of the Hugo. Is the city going to absorb the cost or are we going to pass it on to the developer?
That's the question, yeah.
So we're passing, by charging them the six fifty, we're passing along the first six years.
Right.
First six.
We're collecting the first six years. Your question is, are we going to figure out a way to collect it forever? No.
But, but the only reason we're using those numbers is because that's the difference between wood and aluminum. But if the price of those aluminum poles go up in two years, nobody's going to be privy to that.
Good point.
Cause the, the pole, the aluminum pole will just be gifted to the developer anyway, so change that six fifty to a thousand. So to, to, I think to base it off the difference seems irrelevant to me, because that's just a. We're just pulling that number out because that's what the developer would pay last year if they were going to buy the pole.
But in the future, if they would have to pay a thousand dollars per pole, we'd still be paying the twenty twenty or twenty fifty. If our price would go up, then we know that the price of the poles went up.
So you think that, you think the maintenance is going to match the price of the pole?
Well, I mean, this is what our contract is, and that's based on the pole being at six fifty. So if the poles would go up, Sioux Valley's either got to say, we're going to leave it the same and just absorb the difference ourselves, or.
So you think, you think those two will grow, go up equally?
I, I think they will, I mean, I don't, I actually, if a pole goes up fifty bucks, I don't think they'll change their rate over a fifty dollar pole.
Yeah.
I think they'll leave it the same, I mean, they, this is the first time they changed their rates and we sat down and redoing it over and thinking fifteen, twenty years. I mean, they haven't changed anything on it.
Just a contract or something with Sioux Valley or something, it's a year to year deal?
It's pretty much.
It's just their billing, this is what they're going to bill us now, yeah. They changed their billing rates, just like they would change their electrical rates. But that's the reasoning why they're changing their billing rates.
But I guess ultimately it'd be up to the developer.
Yeah, I mean.
If the city sets a price and the developer doesn't want to pay the price, then they just put in wood in the poles.
But if we don't set a price, they're all going to be aluminum.
Then we're going to pay more.
And we're going to be paying it.
Better set a price for that.
I can't buy my poles for?
That's a great, you got a great question.
I need thirteen of them.
I don't know, I don't think, I mean, I don't, if, if, if we were paying six hundred for them in hole two and we know our cost is going up, I, I honestly don't think it's unreasonable. These are twenty year poles, we're only at six fifty, we're only catching six years worth and then it's just ongoing, ongoing.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think seven fifty thousand, somewhere in there, I think is, is fair.
Well, on the mayor's recommendation, I'm going to make a motion, charge developers thousand dollars per aluminum pole.
Second. Okay, got a motion and second? Discussion, how many years does that give us?
No, no.
No, no.
I'm recording my round. It's not quite. We did a twenty year, we did a twenty year development, twenty two hundred bucks. More than we paid for, for, for the thirteen poles over twenty.
Baby, you're big.
You're at the bottom, quick baby.
Well, but on the, on the flip side of that point, Travis had alluded to the fact that aluminum poles look nicer than wood poles. I don't necessarily know those poles, but I can see the point, if you're going to spend the money, if you're going to spend the money on a development, brand new construction, brand new street. You know, I, I don't know that aluminum is the Cadillac, but it's certainly not the Kia, so.
Hugo, I think is what you, you go.
Yeah, but you can't even get one of those anymore.
It's true.
You know, I think aluminum anymore is probably just a, you know, order shedding anymore.
And that is a one time, that's a one time expense to the contractor.
Yep.
So if he has them there twenty five, thirty years, he has spent a thousand bucks for a thirty year pole, correct?
Yeah.
That we're going to pay for, which is fine, which is fine.
We're going to pay for half of it.
Yep.
But it, but ultimately it's the developer's decision, if he doesn't want to pump the money, then he can split it and everybody has a nice take.
Well, whatever I did mine, I bought the poles, installation and stuff. They were all put in, street signs, paid for all, and then the city's after it.
Right.
You pay for electricity, you like maintenance.
Right.
Yeah, it's a one time.
Twenty dollars, twenty one dollars is part of the electrical use of.
So thirteen poles, so he's going to spend thirteen hundred, or thirteen thousand bucks, but that's a, you like thirteen hundred, so do I.
But are we still going to get to a situation where down the line?
Well, we got the, the spread is. Yep, and we've got the option to review this anytime we want to.
I was saying, if, if our price has increased, I assume we'll look back at it.
It's a proportion between us and the developer have nicer developments, you know.
Oh, no, I agree with that, I completely agree with that, I'm just saying, we can set it up as a percentage wise, so.
That's a lot to keep.
Well, with that being said, will we ask Craig to put a, a light, a light in moving forward, is Craig going to put a wood pole in or aluminum pole?
I'm going to ask you what you want in. Oh, it's going to be wood.
We already made this suit on Nicholson, right?
With poles, yep.
Cause that's what we got coming up, that's what's on the rest of the street.
Alright, yeah, motion and second? We'll vote Nelson?
Yeah.
Horn?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
Come on in.
Yeah.
Perfect, sports complex, committee report.
Mr. Mayor, councilman?
Uh, I believe you guys have a meeting minutes in front of you, so uh for the sake of time, given that there's still several action items. If you'd like me to go into a little more detail on that, I'd be fine to, but if you want to move along to the next one. Be happy, if there wasn't anything major to, to share, given that uh that's no starting that day, we're supposed to go into subcommittees and we only only take like five members that were able to attend that, so.
So just saying, nothing too notable from your last report?
Right.
As far as changes killed.
Yeah. Correct.
Okay, any questions? Okay, alright.
Oh, next item then. I'll stay close, huh?
Yep. Alright, next item, sports complex layout. And let him on there because of the next item on there also, which is getting ready to approve an advertised for grading. One of the things that we felt was necessary is to start to land uh on a layout, we presented. One or two different layouts over the last several months and the Swenson's, the Swenson committees, Swenson's proposal theme, I guess you. Swenson proposal team, I guess you could call it, which is made up of members from HABC, members of Sports Complex, community members. Me, Teresa, Jesse, um, has gotten together three times now. And um, with with Mitch's help over at Stockwell and um, and Ron. And and really got together and looked at it. We did go and and looked at it again this last month. And were able to find ways to tweak that design, so I think with that, I'll probably turn it over to Mitch to discuss the design and the two different designs later.
So I guess what you have in your packet is two different concepts, concept A and concept B. Concept A is is similar to what was presented at the last meeting, if you remember, in a month or so ago. And we made a, we went back to that design just and made a few tweaks to try to gain some ground on that industrial land. And a couple of things we did is we narrowed down the parking, we shaved out some parking from those areas. Uh, we were able to, by doing that, bring that that access road a little further west. And with that, bring that that line over for the industrial area as much as we thought we could. We also, um, on the soccer fields, the, there's three soccer fields showing there and the two would be east ones. Um, if you notice, if you notice for this west one, it's got these dash lines kinda drawn through it. That's a wear zone, so it allows you to shift that field. Forty feet, you know, north to south, so that if the goals are wore out. At one time you can shift it forty feet so that you're off the that wore out area. On the two south fields, we have that same thing in the the first version. Now, we decided to take that out and and trim that down, just to gain some more space. On on that ground. Okay, so those were kinda two, two smaller changes that by doing so raised that acreage to eighteen point four on the industrial land. Um, also what's been updated from here is now that we've got our design done, we have a better understanding of where our detention facilities need to be. So those are shown graphically there as well. Those were were not included on the the last design that was shown. Okay, so that's concept A. Uh, concept B is a concept that we discussed uh, previously with the committee. And this concept should uh, in basically the big difference here is instead of baseball fields. Uh, to the east of the current softball fields, there we've substituted the soccer fields there, okay? Cause the goal of the committee was really to, you know, we wanted, we looked at this twenty acre option, we know that was a a goal. Um, but another goal was to keep similar space from what they currently have. So to keep that similar space and and keep that twenty acres is required uh, repurposing that baseball area to soccer. So that was one of the concepts that was considered as well. Um, also there you can see the the detention laid out on on that concept and you can see how the the two. The two might act differently. Um, the committee after reviewing both decided to, they they felt concept A was the one that they wanted to present to the council. And there's a number of probably reasons for the Sports Complex committee, I think. One of the big reasons with option B is they they really feel that baseball is the future of that area and of that, where these two soccer fields are and really wanna. Stay with baseball use there. Um, with this concept as well, the soccer's a little bit segregated, so if you've got, you know, a family with young kids and older kids. Playing on opposite ends, you might find, might not be as easy to traverse the the area. That was one comment that they had. Um, there there was meeting minutes from that meeting as well too, if you wanna look through and see what some of the discussion was there, but those were some of the main takeaways. So I guess with that. Those are your questions regarding the layouts, the the construction documents that we had put together currently reflect the concept A. And so I know the mayor wanted to have that discussion again about these these two concepts. So I turn it back over to you.
Right, cause that makes a difference on on what you're going to do when you let loose the graders, is that right?
Yep.
As far as knowing where your retention areas are gonna be, how you're gonna grade certain areas, things like that, so we're not doing things twice if we don't need to. I think, just speaking from the proposal team and have others chime in, um, as they feel necessary. We felt concept A is a more complete plan. It really rounds out those fields, um, those ball fields there really makes it look like, you know, this was, this was the original design. This is how it should be and allows room for soccer at a difference of about one and a half acres. Um, where you look at the other concept and it, you you it's just the the feel of it, the look of it. The actual usability of some of it is not the same. One of the things that came up is with the with concept B, it really limits your ability to handling tournaments. Um, if you're doing anything out there for ball, it um, with the two fields, you just, you just aren't, aren't there for tournaments where. With the four and that, I call it a clover leaf, I don't know if that's right, but um, your ability to host and do things out there is much greater. And um, and it, that green area is still off to the side for soccer is in good shape. Mitch alluded to the parking. You 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 got quite a bit skinnier on the parking compared to where we are on the original plans, which.
Yeah, maybe just a visit about the parking. One thing, in the the initial proposal graphic that we had. The this, we were accommodating soccer and baseball being played at the same time. We discussed that with the committee. They felt that the the reality of that occurring is probably small. So we trimmed back the parking to satisfy a baseball. You know, a fourplex of baseball facility, usually you need about sixty stalls per field, so that's what the current design reflects on both these options.
Can I get a, I'm gonna make a motion to approve option A to move forward with uh, period. It's kind of like I don't wanna talk about this all night. Now people try to get me on board with eighteen point four acres, but it's quarter after nine, I'd like to have a drink.
Mitch, I think moving forward, instead of being like master plan A, master plan B, be a master plan A revisions seventeen. You know, master plan B is twenty three.
Right.
Only only a few more. I have here a mention real quick too is um, what's this stuff on the bottom here that looks like water?
Yeah, well, they're not gonna, it's not gonna be standing water.
That's what I was wanting you to say.
Yeah, it's not gonna be standing water, that's 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 gonna dry or drain dry.
Those'll be where you find your kids.
But though, like Craig said, those won't turn, those be cattail areas when it's.
Where you train your dog.
Well, you should, you should have run cattails. All right, then Matt as well, um.
We have a second here.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, the importance of having that shift in field, is that pretty, pretty important to you guys or?
No, because it's, when you look at our actual layout of what we have right now, we don't have three large fields. We have eight fields of varying sizes, only one large uh, full size field, so. You know, we do kinda adapt to our numbers and, you know, at what age group, so um, that sliding back and forth doesn't.
Is that from more an older group of?
Yeah, those larger ones, yeah, yeah.
So you're not gonna do more than one of those?
Right, right.
Okay, all right. Just was curious.
So, so even though you see three fields, we would use them differently based on, like I said, our numbers. We have. Eight fields right now that we're using at varying sizes.
I just was curious, cause I seen it in the second, there was four of them on the second um, figure out there, so that was all I had, so.
Yeah, basically, if you wanna hold a tournament, you could have three regulation size fields.
Right.
The rest of the time, you'd have a regulation size field and smaller.
Smaller, right, right. Yep.
And um, as I'm looking, I'm I'm I assume right now really what we're doing here tonight is make sure that. Master plan A is the thing that gets to a cross and then the the design that we have, what I'm seeing. As two softball fields and two baseball fields is not etched in stone, is that correct?
Right, I think the the plan, the last time that we talked, if one of them would be a mixed use field, but um, as far as baseball and softball. Um, are concerned, as far as working that out to where we have, um, you know, enough numbers where we do have. Need those four fields there and then we would. Kinda, I guess, adjust as far as which one, Matt, you remember what? This wasn't one of them we were talking about, I think was gonna be a mixed used field.
A fine mixed use field, I would say, agr- agralime across the.
Right, and then I guess it's set up differently. I'm not a baseball guy or softball guy, but you can play either of the two. It would be sole one, baseball one.
Sure, and then chops there, but anyway, okay, so so so. My question is, is um, in regards to the baseball field itself. Um, you feel that there should, there should, that baseball's up and coming and that there should be two baseball fields minimum in this complex?
Or as far as, at least the total of the four mixed use fields, as far as how we have them, so, but two additional.
You probably can't tell if baseball works in Mountsmall. That probably wasn't coming from you.
The what?
The upping, that baseball is the upping coming.
Well, we do have, as far as our numbers right now, with baseball, we have um, what, almost three hundred. Um, players in the West Central Baseball Association.
Right.
So, and a hundred and twenty six softball players, so there is the need to continue, I guess, the clover leaf. Um, and then as far as determining between the two organizations on how we would do that. Um, you know, those two groups would sit down and.
I don't believe tonight we're making a decision on whether those are baseball fields or not, they're they're ball fields.
Right.
And when it comes time to spend money on ball fields, some of that, will it make a difference?
One rate, one comment to make on that, I mean, we. Do have this configured for baseball. What you'll find is that between baseball and softball, if you look at the differences in where the the field position ends up. They are different, they have different backstop. Um, so we'll be grading to the to the infield mound, as long as, you know, baseball is kinda what you guys are thinking, the direction you wanna go on. And then we're fine with what we've got set up, but if you set it also on softball, I might make a few tweaks.
Well, I don't know, you, do you wanna talk about the conversation you had with Larry then, as far as?
Yeah.
The softball and baseball, Matt, will you be able to, um?
Uh, Matt King of West Central Baseball, um, like he said, five years ago Humboldt took over the baseball program. And at that time, there were a hundred and thirty kids and um, we've transformed that at at the, at that time to West Central Baseball. This year we have two hundred and ninety six kids out for baseball. Uh, we have, I think, eighty nine kids five and six years old. So I I think it's something growing and and we've never said that we're gonna abandon Humboldt. And come to Hartford, but I think it would be nice for some of the families if we played more games in Hartford. We hear that every year. But we'd be dumb to not use those fields in Hartford. Field A is a pretty nice field. We've got uh, five fields in Hartford, in Humboldt. That get used quite heavily. This year we are using Milo Low in Turtle Creek for the younger kids. Works out, but probably not the best situation. The more we can use some of those fields, I think the better off we'd be. If it continues to grow, um, I mean, we're gonna be out of access in Humboldt too and I. I know that's nobody's problem here, and you have decisions to make, but at the same time, for the community and the families, I think it would be a. A good thing if we could have at least some of that baseball. The one thing I could see that we need, I don't know that we need two baseball fields either, I would agree with that. Um, I would say maybe we need a a big field, like field A in Humboldt, the main field, like with Legion in that place. Uh, we need another field like that because that field is used for the amateurs, the Humboldt Hartford amateurs. Um, it's used for older kids, it's used for Legion, it's used for high school ball. It is, and at some point, we can use these fields that we have now. For the kids thirteen and under. When you hit that thirteen age, it's bigger dimensions, bigger fields like field A. Um, so the multi-use is great for our younger population, which we have a lot of, but I could see us needing another field A if we just had one. Designated baseball field maybe down the line. I know that's how we were going on today.
So Matt, I just wanted, you know, shut up. So you, at this point, cause I've asked this question before. At this point, let's just say we we, you know, we had three softball fields per se because of the backstop that Mitch Mitch mentioned, and you guys know. What I'm talking about, a multi-use field.
Yep.
That you, if one of those four fields with a designated baseball field, you would still be able to use Diamond A and Humboldt.
Correct.
Okay, cool.
Yep. And I did talk to Larry Masterson, who's uh, I was on the softball board also until a couple of months ago, I think, was able to get off that, but. I talked to Larry Masterson with uh, West Central Softball and he agreed, I mean, if we had one designated baseball field. You know, four fields total, one designated baseball, that'd probably be what would work best for us.
So how what, okay.
Well, let's not, let's, we got a motion a second.
All right.
The motion is?
Let's, let's hear the motion back.
Sure, Monahan moves to approve option A to move forward with grading. Keel, second.
Okay. So what's that mean?
With option A?
To bid?
No, no, this is just the layout.
We uh, so basically all you're gonna do is finalize your construction documents off of our motion. Right, we have already appropriated, or not necessarily appropriated, we've made a motion to move forward with bidding. Uh, crazy package. This will allow you to finalize your construction documents, correct?
Yeah, we still on option A or B, right?
Right.
You were still on option A. I think you had put in the word grading and I don't know if we should have that in this. Should we have this in this motion? Because we're not actually voting on the grading, we're just voting on the layout, right?
Uh, my motion was to approve.
I apologize.
A so we could move forward with planning to grade.
Oh, that's what you meant, I apologize. Okay, 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 so we'll just, uh, it it's, you moved to approve option A layout. Um, and then second by Keel.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, you didn't understand my motion.
I apologize.
I move. Nelson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yep.
Keel? Burnham?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yep.
All right, next up, we got Sports Complex grading approval to advertise for bids.
So known with option A, that's what we've got everything configured for. There is one subtle change that I just wanted to discuss. On this option A, we show the detention pond in the vault, in the park facility and a detention pond on the. Industrial facility, and I would suggest that we bring those together so that, so it's just one detention pond. Um, but I wanted to discuss that with you guys and.
Bring that up after we finalize the plan.
I just started, I just.
Did you, did you literally just do that?
I asked you about water.
Mr. Brown?
I asked you about water.
Mr. Brown?
So you proposed moving the drainage from the commercial property to the sports complex?
Yes. And making it one, one detention pond so that whoever ends up with this industrial ground doesn't have a detention pond that they have to manage themselves. It's a small change for us in the plans, we can do it either way, but that is something I wouldn't do.
So is it one on the green will go away?
Right.
No, well, no.
Merge with the other one.
Maybe or reach in all the texture plans, so you gotta do it.
So how many acres do we lose then?
Well, I look at this a couple of different ways. One is if we were to, if we had an R five come in. And they're going to a listed for eighteen point four acres, right? And R five comes in, so they're on eighteen point four acres. Part of that is they're going to assume that some of that is for detention. That's always part of that. Now, if we move it over and we combine it with the other one, my concern. A little bit that. We do say we're gonna be the manager of that detention pond, but it's it's hooked down to a other one that we have to manage.
And they have a chemical spill and now it's contaminated the detention pond, now the city's on the hook for it.
We either take it now or they'll give it to us later.
Well, no.
We don't have to take it though, it's not, it's not a, it's not a housing development.
We end up with law.
You'd have to, you'd have to accept it.
I have a question, Mitch. When, cause that he, now. I'm going off what we literally just voted on, which was proposed by you. That detention pond doesn't necessarily.
That detention pond doesn't necessarily have to be graded in. With the grading package that we're gonna hold up in the future does, because maybe. If that sells, they'll wanna move that. To the west. Or maybe they'll buy it to the north five acres and wanna move it north.
Now, what if it gets flooded up?
Just leave that detention pond out of the grading package. Just create that entire area flat and let them worry about the pond.
We can sure do that, I guess, if that's what you guys prefer, I just think.
We wanna place the pond and then have somebody.
It comes back to when you go to sell a lot, and you're marketing this lot, part of the whole idea. You know, and we, we've met with a few people out there, and for them to visualize, you know, how that area's gonna be graded. And, and for them to just go out there and know that that piece of land is, is done, being worked and, you know, that probably is worth something. That's the only reason I bring it up, because if we're out there with a contractor, it's really nothing to, to, to build that pond. And, and have, have that be, to benefit that property at that time.
But that's if you're talking, if there's one buyer for, what if you split that up into four different lots, like you said? Then, the one on the west side, I mean, it's gonna have to get its own detention somewhere anyway, so I mean, it doesn't. I mean, I'm, I'm with you, Mark, I, I don't know why we would. There's so many unknowns, why would we plan for something when we don't even know how it's gonna be utilized?
I wouldn't be surprised if we, if we would see an option where you use that five acres. And the additional one looks to be about five to seven right behind it, and that ends up being a good parcel for somebody. And then another second parcel that sits up north. And so I just, I don't know that we know our layout well enough for that piece to decide on detention.
I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, but I don't know if we know enough about what's gonna happen.
Okay, well, if you split it into four. Again. If the, if you're gonna ask every developer do their own set specific pond, you end up with four ponds out there, which isn't here you got any problem, but. To me, there's a value in getting that, that as ready as you can be without them having to worry about, worry about detention.
But no, but nobody's gonna want to, you don't wanna be the last guy in. And have a retention pond on your property purchasing land you can't use. So if the city's gonna move forward and designate a retention pond, I think you just take that land right off the table. Cause I don't know how you sell it, I don't know how you sell somebody a retention pond. That, that drains the entire site, you know what I mean?
It's gotta be named Tataka.
Okay, we'll, we'll leave it off, that's the general.
I don't know, if you wanna chime in, Mr. Brown?
I, you can go either way, cause you can't predict what's gonna go. It's, it doesn't seem to, I don't think you can guess what's gonna happen. Uh you can try to, but. I just be, I, you could go either way, if you wanna leave it filled in, not build it today, I think that's fine too, but that way you got a clean slate.
I think the one assembly factory area that the city wants to have is one large RFI or parcel without.
And then we don't know. Yeah, I, I don't think we can, I don't think we can make that. We can't answer that.
I think you can, and you can say you wanna do it as an industrial park for small businesses, or you can say we're gonna do this for a big fish, period. There, there's two options you can consider there.
Yeah, but that, but that's only year to year though.
What do you mean?
Because one year this council might say, we're only gonna sell it at eighteen acres or twenty-three. And a year from now, that group of you might say, we're gonna, we're gonna piece it out, three acres at a time.
I mean, with that logic, any, I mean, any decision changes year to year, but.
Well, I, I, I think it does on twenty-three acres. Look at, look at.
Twenty-three acres.
Look how many conversations we've had about a sports complex. This is like option five.
Yeah.
So, you know, different people have different ideas. All I'm saying is, I don't, I'm not sure we should dig a hole for retention that. Somebody may or may not have to fill in and we can't sell at a later date, because nobody wants to buy it. That's all I'm saying.
I think, I'm, I think I agree with that, just don't do anything with it now, just leave it filled in and. Don't worry about that when you sell it later, we have that.
If we don't do anything, we still accomplish what the sports complex committee needs.
Alright, yeah. Yeah, we will add, yes.
I was looking for the original gr- grading plan, and if I refresh my memory, does it go all the way to the north boundary?
The original grading plan?
The grading plan that we've approved in the fall for five hundred and some thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yes. Does not include the five acres that are north of there, but it goes all the way to the north pond, grades that whole industrial ground, so.
In reality, if we stick another detention pond in there, it's probably gonna increase. Our, our construction costs.
The detention pond actually would lower it, because we're going to have to, if we don't create that pond, we're gonna have to extend some storm sewer. To our pond, a little bit further than what we've got in there now, so, that, that, that's part of the reason why I bring it up too.
What's purpose of retention pond?
Is the, the, so. The bulk of this detention pond, if we have burial ground, it's gonna get developed industrial, now there's more pavements, more runoff. We have standards that say that additional runoff has to be detained. And slowly released at the same rate that it was, that it released prior to being developed, okay? So, any developer that comes in here, you're gonna be telling them they have to meet those standards. And that they're gonna have to build a detention facility on this property, okay? Or we can build a detention facility now and tell them they don't have to worry about detention when they come to build this facility. If you parcel it off into four properties, you're gonna have to tell each one of those individually that they have to do detention for each one of their properties. Or you can tell them detention is already taken care of, there's a regional pond here, and you don't have to worry about the detention.
So we're preventing water from running on to the field?
Yes, to the east.
But how can you predict? How much retention do you need if you don't know what's being built, right?
We, we plan it for industrial use, and industrial use, whether, whether, doesn't, it's not dependent on the business, it's just that type of land. Typically generates a certain amount of runoff.
So what you're planning, so what you're planning for could very well be overbuilt.
Well, if the use changes from industrial to something less, yes.
But you, but you can, somebody could theoretically buy that parcel and put something less than industrial in it.
Potentially.
And I'm, I'm not, I'm not convinced that. That having somebody put a detention pond in is the end of the world, because they literally put one, one block west of my house. For. Multi-family housing.
Yeah, I mean if.
So, so it can be done, you know, on live. That's all I'm saying.
Alright, so, let's move on from this point, I think.
Yeah.
I think we, I think we beat it to that. Let's talk about, are we ready to advertise for bids? On sports complex grading.
I sure am. Uh let me go, the plans are done, we're gonna make some small tweaks based on some of the discussion tonight. Uh we've estimated the project at, that uh six hundred thousand is where our estimate is, we did have to add some more storm sewer than we planned. When we initially did our estimates, there's more earth to move out there than we initially planned, so that has gone up since our last, our last estimate was five hundred and thirty thousand.
Where, where did, where did more earth come from? Who brought that in, bitch?
There's more.
That yard of dirt out there is taller than you thought?
Well.
I tell you, you've been watching, you've been watching John too long.
We didn't have, we don't have a survey when we do those, do those estimates, it just happened to be we got more ground than we. We were estimating, we actually have some, we have excess dirt, so. Uh we're probably gonna be trying to find a couple places to put it.
Whoa, 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 we know where that's going, right there, with him.
Well, we've talked, we've talked about that.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion. To advertise for bids for the grading work on sports complex. And then, A, second.
Motion in a second?
Any other discussion?
Yes?
Jones?
Yes.
My.
What's the motion?
Brennaman moves to advertise for bids for the grading work for the sports complex, Keel second.
Yes, over there?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Alright, H C's programming issues back or not?
Nope.
Nobody just might wanna say what they are and.
I will. Alright, I think what it is. First one is for mayor proclamation, Arbor Day. And, and deciding to have that on April twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen.
Need a motion for you?
What do you need to answer, something?
You need a motion or?
No, not really, basically just Jeremy say he proclaimed April twenty-seventh to kind of read that part of now therefore I.
Alright, there's a whole bunch of whereas's.
Yep.
And um, so this one is the proclamation for Arbor Day, April twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen Arbor Day. And the city Hartford areas all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and water, and support our city's community forestry program. And further our citizens to plant trees to blood in the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. The seventeenth of April, two thousand eighteen. Alright, good work, alright, we got another one, there, this is the Silver Star Banner Day. There are several whereas's on this one as well. And therefore, I, Jeremy Manning, Mayor of City of Hartford, do hereby proclaim my appreciation of the Silver Star families of America. In honor of their commitment to wounded armed forces members, I hereby declare May first as Silver Star Banner Day. The official day to honor the wounded and ill soldiers of the city of Hartford. In testimony whereof, I appear to set my hand in the cause of this, and seal it, City of Hartford, State of South Dakota. Last one is the building safety proclamation, building safety month, May of two thousand eighteen. Now, therefore, I, Jeremy Manning, Mayor of Hartford, to South Dakota, do hereby proclaim the month of May two thousand eighteen as building safety month. Accordingly, encourage our citizens to join with their communities in participation in building safety month. Alright, next item on the agenda is correspondence, a letter from Central Valley homeowners association. I don't know if anybody can present that, um but. We did at one point, I believe, but does anybody from the council wanna discuss that? I know it comes up in certain words, so I think.
Council member felt that order, I mean, I've been encouraging those, those parties to. Get down there themselves.
Okay.
So just take a look at it, here, here's, here's in a nutshell, my two cents. You got a development going on the end of a paved street, sits on a gravel road. Concern is traffic's gonna increase on said paved street. How do you? How do you police that? Currently, there's little to no speed enforcement on there, so we'd like to see, uh maybe implement the. Speed trailer more. There's been talk of depressions and speed bumps, and I don't think that's the right way to go.
Stop signs?
Yeah. Uh, you yourself said those aren't utilized for speed control, so. Uh I, I'd also like to see. Or ask what, what are our options if we put up signs that say no through traffic, local traffic only? Things of that nature.
Yeah, you don't wanna put signs up unless they're actually what they're meant for. Um, let me think about some different things we can do up there.
Well, I mean.
Speed trailer, I, you know, I'd have the deputies even just sit up there often, randomly.
Well, I tell you what, I, you know, you buy a couple cups of coffee, they sat up there certain times of day.
I'm gonna throw this out there, just to be aware that when you find the speeders, it's gonna be local people that live there.
That's fine.
We find that with daycares, they'll complain about the traffic speed, and you put speed trailer up, and it's the moms that are dropping the kids off.
That's fine, cause the same, they're, they're reversed, and you got other neighbors that complain about the speeders, so then they can go, oh, it's that little party. It's, it's, it's always an enforcement issue, though. And the, and the note, I mean, local tra- no, no through traffic, I mean, really, there's no point in driving on Parte. Parte, Parte.
But you get through.
You can't stop, but you're right.
Just like. I, I ran into Keith at the, I ran into Keith at the bank, he told me that this letter was coming. Uh expressed his uh hope that we would address it, but really, Parte kinda is a, is a double whammy. Cause when that developer was made, there's no sidewalks along there neither. So his concern is you got kids, where do they go, their only place that they're riding their bikes and stuff is on the street, not, there's no sidewalks.
There's a solution to that problem as well.
Have them put sidewalks in.
Have them redo the streets to city standards, put sidewalk.
Right, I get that, so that's, but that was his uh. That was his comment, to me, they're fearful that when we tear that up, when Van de Mark gets tore up for the sewer, that it's just gonna, which. It is, I mean, it's gonna increase the traffic.
I agree with Mr. Monahan, and I think as soon as we put Van de Mark to city standards, then we can start asking those folks on Parte to. Go down that road.
Yeah, how many lots are gonna be in?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three. I mean, I, I really, I, it's gonna come down to that, and I think that it. It would be short sighted of us to let that development. Fully go in and happen, which we've already started down that road without a serious plan of paving Van de Mark. And, I mean, if we were talking about fifty-three more lots on the other side of Mickelson over here, or Bassam was ready to put in, and we said, yep. There's no other access except for that gravel road.
If my memory serves me correctly, we saw vehicle counts in excess of Mickelson. On Van de Mark. At certain times. In excess of Mickelson. Now you tear Mickelson, now you tear Van de Mark out, where does that traffic go? So, um back to the speed trailer, back to some signage perhaps, back to enforcement. Uh we'd also like to see some, those, those vehicle colors out there. If you can start to establish patterns, use, uses, things of that nature, so when we have that conversation. What those folks on Parte about, bringing that street to city standards, we have some facts to say, here's why it needs to be.
Van de Mark, man?
Parte. I mean, Van de Mark as well, but after Parte, after Parte, Van de Mark's approved, if. If you need, if you don't see a dramatic reduction in vehicle counts after Van de Mark, cause you've got this hysterical.
One thing we might be able to do up there for, during the construction of the sewer up there. We could get by putting signs up on both ends of Van de Mark and on Parte that um road. Close for, just for uh non-through traffic for construction, it's gonna be two, two repeat from going that way. You're really still, cause you could be having construction up that way, you're gonna have construction vehicles up and down that part of it. So I mean, you might be able to get some of that off that way, and not put permanent signage up and try to, you know, stop it that way. Once the construction done, signs come down, I mean, you don't leave them up, but.
Think about, um so let's think on, let's move down the road just a little further. Developments, uh Van de Mark's done, whatever. No construction traffic, and put signage like that up on Parte. So you get those drywall trucks and those, you know, those delivery trucks that are lost. And they have, now they come to the, no construction traffic, get a resident on Parte sees. That's the third time that eight and drywall trucks go down our street today.
Let me look into some different signage words that, that might work up there. Um we got that conference coming up next week, I'll bring it up to some of the guys and see what Sue Balls does, see what other towns do, and you know, stuff like that on it. We, our ordinance is that they are allowed to drive on city streets to and from destinations, if they get lost, you know. We, our ordinance is that they are allowed to drive on city streets to and from destinations, if they get lost, you know. You might wanna have, I mean, do one of those things, you try to talk to the concrete guys and that, they're doing the heavy loads. And just say, hey, try to stop Part T, you know, and that's where you go right to the company itself. And you talk to the people in the, behind the desk, and tell them, hey, keep, try and keep the concrete trucks off of Part T. So you could do that with certain construction things and that, and try to keep them that way, you know.
As Mark, as Mark stated, it's not built to city design standards. So, in essence, if that's the case, can't you say, you're, you're in violation of our design standard for this road, run them a big check, a big ticket?
If you wanna truly keep construction equipment up, then all you gotta do is post it. That's all you gotta do. Because I don't, I don't care what you're delivering, it doesn't matter what you're delivering, if it's posted five ton and you get out with cement truck, you know you're doing wrong.
Yeah.
You flat out know you're doing wrong, you're doing it on purpose.
Yep, you're going to need to work with, before we do that, we need to work with the local garbage companies and that, because they're gonna have small trucks up in there.
Well, you could exempt garbage trucks. If the only thing you're worried about is, is heavy construction equipment, you post it, you exempt the garbage trucks and you're done. Cause nobody else should be up there.
Would you permit then, or have them come down and get a special permit if they're doing some concrete work in that area or on Part T, somebody's putting a driveway?
They're probably gonna have a firework permit, aren't they?
But then we'd have to give them per, uh, permit to the cement company to deliver, you know, cause you give. It's kind of a catch toy too, you know, you let this guy do it, but you can't let this person do it, then all of a sudden.
But if they have a permit to do work there, then that construction truck has to go there, I mean.
But if you gotta wait, you gotta wait, but they might.
So currently in our ordinance, we do have really weight limits on our city streets. And we have exemptions for contractors, if you're doing work and garbage trucks and whatnot, so it would be very similar to what we currently have. We just have to decide what weight we want for that road.
So really is, really is, here's what I'm gonna ask. Is for the scenarios of how we can get Van Mark paid. Can I get a summary? Like, this has to happen, this many people sign off, or delayed assessments, like. What, what process?
Just make the.
I'd say the council can just decide to do it.
To do what?
To pave Van.
Resolution necessity, you have the ability to resolution necessity and basically. Tell the property owners on that you're gonna do this project, and they're gonna bear an assessment, they have the chance to come in and protest that. If they do, if they have a majority that protested, you still have the ability to do a, I don't know what they call it. If you can override the protest with a, but you have to have a, a two-thirds majority, I think, to override that, that petition or that. That, uh, protest. That's the, that's the process you guys have as a council.
To have, um, that is added as an agenda item for our May first meeting. Craig will have a chance to go back and come up with some, some injunction time solution for Part T.
I would.
And, and we have a discussion.
With respect, I didn't give my question quite answered, I got one option, is that the only option?
The other option is that the property owners come and petition the project, if there's a majority there, then you can go forward with it that way as well.
In this case, the largest landowner is the golf course. Who. Am I fair to say the only way they would ever even consider signing up on it was probably to abandon my street? And I don't see that as a good solution.
I, I would.
Because then the people will come to Part T also.
I would, I would caution, I would caution everybody. To put, to putting this on the agenda and having a conversation about. Forcing this upon residents until the entire right of way is secured. Because short of the right of way being secured, you will not build that street.
I relate to that, and that is why I was asking what my, what our options are.
I think.
Saying.
No, I'm just saying.
Do, I wanna know how we can do it.
Step number one is to secure the right of way, then we can have a whole lot of conversation after that. But if we scare anybody off that has a right of way, then your, your, your dreams of the street are gone.
I think it's real expensive to.
Yeah.
Right, then you're going in with a domain or something.
So, May, May first, second meeting in May, whatever, I, I think it's, I think it's a non-starter until the right of way is secured.
You, are you looking for just a schedule once the right of way is secured, is that what you were kinda looking for?
I don't know the process.
Yeah, we could, what we could do is put a schedule together for a process if and when you get the right of way. So, you know, if you get the ri- right of way by the end of, let's say you got it by the end of May or end of June. And that would be another three months before you could actually then start your process. You know, cause you'd have to go through a resolution and get that process, and we can put that timeline together.
I have that process, we don't even have our engineers do that.
Or any citizen can call a petition and go over to the landlord.
So those are two options? Is that the only two options?
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Okay, unless you don't wanna, unless you want to pay for it all by yourself.
But. Neither one of those options are viable without the right of way. You, you can petition all day long, but without that right of way, that project will never happen, regardless of the golf course. What Travis thinks, that housing development.
See, I didn't know this, this is why I'm asking questions.
No, and I'm just saying, it's all a dead issue without the right of way. Step one, right of way. Period.
But what we can discuss, uh, in May first is. Our options for controlling construction traffic, posting the roads. How often we can have a speed trailer up there.
Yes.
To our, to, to our homeowners with and say, hey, there's, you know, we're not gonna cut that. We're not gonna cut that depression in the road, but we're gonna do these.
And homeowners discuss too, just the speed limit signs that flash when you're speeding. You and I talked about that, we didn't get it verified.
I don't think you're gonna have a lot of heavy construction equipment up there, cause nobody in their right mind.
Just, this, this is a concern that was brought up to the homeowners last August, I think is only ever meeting. That people up there are concerned about speaking.
Oh, I'm sure they do, but as far as trucks. Drywall trucks, I mean, nobody in their right mind's gonna willingly wanna go down a residential. Through a residential neighborhood that borders a golf course, where they can take north Van Mark, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense.
So driving the road right now. I could see people avoiding.
Avoiding one, maybe north Van Mark, especially after, uh.
You mean the homeowners, or are you talking construction?
Anybody, construction companies?
I mean. They're gonna take their.
They're gonna go, they might go that way to get there, but they're not gonna go that way when they leave.
They're gonna bounce all over, and their trucks can fly all over there.
Send them to the north.
I mean, coming down here tonight.
I know it needs to be blamed with the weather, it's not been cooperating with it.
Township would like that very much, wouldn't they?
Are we done?
Alright, let's.
Are we ready? I'll make a motion, I believe. Terminate Adro.
Sternke.
Sternke. Um, plan effective immediately.
Second.
Alright, can I motion a second, further discussion? And none? Invoked? Nelson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And my.
Yeah.
Carries? We have Washington, New Jersey.
So.
Second. On paper?
Aye.
Any votes?